Good afternoon. The October twenty first, two thousand and twenty five work session is special session, which is our twenty third voting session is now called to order. I'd like to ask for a motion. Well, first off, before we do that, I got two announcements. First is number eleven on our our agenda today is the pros cons of harm reduction program. We are going to be moving that until November fourth. We are waiting numbers and we would rather be more informed as we present that to the public. So that will be moved to November fourth. Number two is a somber one. Our very hardworking city administrator Scott Nice Warner had lost his wife this morning. And we just want to tell Scott that our thoughts and prayers are going out to him, and I hope everybody in the public would do the same as well. We just want to say we love you, Scott, and, and, you know, our thoughts and prayers are with you. And today sitting in is Michelle Hepburn for acting city administrator today. All right, now, I'd like to ask a motion to go into special session. Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in special session. All right, first up, for our first motion is an introduction of an ordinance authorizing the purchase of an easement over a portion of that certain parcel of real property located at seven zero three to seven zero five Mount Attle Road, Hagerstown, Maryland.
Mr. Mayor, I've removed for the mayor and council to introduce an ordinance authorizing the purchase of an easement over a portion of that certain parcel of real property located at seven zero three to seven zero five Mount Attle Road, Hagerstown, Maryland. The purchase price of twenty thousand dollars and no sense is to be paid from the fund balance reserve.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, amendment to community development block grant FY two thousand and twenty six annual action plan.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve the amendment to the FY twenty six community development block grant annual action plan for the following actions. Contingent upon final approval by HUD, reallocation of funding for the activity, quote, alleyway repaving projects, end quote, toward the previously existing FY twenty four activity for Wheaton Park Phase Two Dan Shell in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Details of the CD BG amendment are attached.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution, approval of city FY two thousand and twenty six community development block grant subrecipient agreements.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the adoption of a resolution authorizing, excuse me, the execution of twelve subrecipient agreements for the following nonprofit organizations, Hark, Girls Inc., Horizon Goodwill, Literacy Council, Reach, America's Halling for Hope, True North Company, United Way of Washington County, Community Free Clinic, and Sibus Mission. Also, Washington County Commission on Aging and Washington County Habitat for Humanity. The adoption of the resolution includes one hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars in public service grant funding and forty thousand dollars in housing-based services.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, approval of a resolution to accept an offer from LP One LLC, a limited liability company for a deed of easement and maintenance agreement located near Hever Road, Hagerstown, Maryland.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution for the easement from LPI LLC for the perpetual and permanent sanitary sewer easement and right of ingress and egress, all the purpose of constructing, operating, maintaining, repairing, replacing, and removing as needed the facilities across, over, and under the twenty-foot-wide strip of land described herein on the easement exhibit prepared by Frederick Seubert and Associates Incorporated, dated September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five, and attached to the deed of easement and maintenance agreement.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a resolution to accept the offer of a deed of easement and maintenance agreement located at Breckenridge Drive, Hagerstown, Maryland from LP One LLC.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution to accept the purchase of a permanent water easement and the right of ingress, all for the purpose of construction, operating, maintaining, repairing, replacing, and removing as needed the facilities across, over, and under the parcel of land graphically depicted, identified and labeled as WL easement, described herein on the easement exhibit prepared by Frederick Seubert and Associates Incorporated, dated September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five, and attached to the deed of the easement and maintenance agreement.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a resolution to accept the offer of a deed of easement and maintenance agreement located Breckenridge Drive, Hagerstown, Maryland from Sunshine Development Twenty Five LLC.
Mr. Mayor, I've removed for the approval of a resolution to accept the perpetual and permanent water easement and the right of ingress, all for the purpose of constructing, operating, maintaining, repairing, replacing, and removing as needed the facilities across, over, and under the parcel of land graphically depicted, identified, and labeled as waterline easement described herein in the easement exhibit prepared by Frederick Seubert Associates, Inc., dated September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five, and attached to the deed of easement and maintenance agreement.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a resolution to accept the offer of a deed of easement and maintenance agreement located at Hever Road, Hagerstown, Maryland from Bonnie B. Lewis.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution to accept the offer of easement from Bonnie B. Lewis for perpetual and permanent sanitary sewer easement and the right of ingress and egress, all for the purpose of constructing, operating, maintaining, repairing, replacing, and removing as needed the facilities across, over, and under the twenty-foot-wide strip of land graphically depicted herein on the easement exhibit prepared by Frederick Seubert and Associates, Inc., dated September sixteen, two thousand and twenty five, and attached to the deed of easement and maintenance agreement.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that is in special session, and we will now move into work session. First up, we have a couple of proclamations. First up, Councilwoman Bell is going to do the breast cancer awareness month. And is there anybody here who signs Stacy's? Trace after that. Okay. There's nobody coming up.
October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, held annually to increase awareness of this disease. Approximately one in eight women will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer in their lifetime. And although more common in women, breast cancer can affect men as well. Mammograms are the single most effective method detecting breast cancer changes long before physical symptoms may be, may be cancer can be seen or felt. And breast cancer is the most common diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of cancer death among women in the United States. Breast Cancer Awareness Incorporated offers free mammograms for men and women who have little or no insurance. They also offer many free programs to breast cancer fighters, thrivers, survivors, and their families to aid in supporting them through this entire breast cancer journey. For over thirty-five years, Breast Cancer Awareness Incorporated has been dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer. I, William McIntyre, mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim and recognize October, two thousand and twenty five, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage our citizens to talk with their health care providers about regular screenings and to promote early detection of breast cancer and having regular clinical breast examinations, getting regular mammograms, and practicing monthly breast cell exam.
Okay, next up, we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And could I have Renee Caldera and Karen Moore? Come up, if possible.
Domestic Violence Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that domestic violence is widespread and has serious public health implications for every member of the Hagerstown community. And according to the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, thirty-four point four percent of Maryland women and twenty-eight point eight percent of Maryland men experience intimate partner physical violence, intimate partner rape, and/or intimate partner stalking. And through prevention, education, and increased awareness, there is compelling evidence that we can reduce domestic violence in Hagerstown and hold perpetrators accountable for their actions. And the city of Hagerstown strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners, as well as every citizen, to actively engage in both public and private efforts, including conversations about domestic violence is how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address this issue. Therefore, I, William McIntyre, mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to unite in raising awareness, supporting survivors, and promoting healthy, respectful relationships. Let us all remember, if you see something, say something. Together, we can be part of the solution to end domestic violence in our community.
Any more? No. It's fair. One, two, three, and one, two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have National Hispanic Heritage Month, and I would like Councilwoman Anderson to come up.
And everyone that attends, can you please come up? Thank you. Thank you for being here. I'm going to be a little bit honest with you guys. I'm a little bit shaky after some news that we all got to say. Forgive me if I'm not myself. I'm not really here, but the city of Hagerstown proudly recognizes and celebrates the history, the culture, and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans who have enriched our city and serves as the opportunity to recognize and celebrate the culture, traditions, and the values that Hispanic and Latino communities bring to our shared society. The National Hispanic Heritage Month observes September fifteen to October fifteen, commemorates the independence anniversaries of several Latin American countries, honoring the legacy of Hispanic Americans whose heritage traces to Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And the city of Hagerstown reaffirms its commitment to fostering the inclusive and welcoming environment where all cultures are respected and all people have the opportunity to thrive. And on that note, I do want to simply say that we did not forget that it did end as of October fifteen. We, just as a city, were not here that week, and I apologize for that. Therefore, on behalf of the mayor and city council, we do want to go ahead and proclaim National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor McIntyre, and members of the city council and members of the Hagerstown community. On behalf of the Maryland Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, I am deeply honored to accept this proclamation recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month. We are grateful to the mayor and the city council. This proclamation is more than a gesture. It is a powerful affirmation of the entrepreneurial spirit, resilience, and diversity that define our Hispanic communities. From small business owners to educators, artists, and professionals, Hispanic Melanders continue to shape our shared future with innovation and heart. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the city of Hagerstown to uplift Hispanic voices, foster inclusive growth, and build bridges across communities. Thanks again for this meaningful recognition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. On behalf of our Latin American community, our Hispanic community, I want to thank you because it's not just a month. It is a celebration of our culture, of our traditions, of our heritage, and being able to have the recognition, it goes beyond what, beyond thank you that I can say. Thank you so much.
There we go. Okay, give me your best smiles. One, two, three, more. Good smiles, one, two, three.
Okay, next up is summary agenda review. Trying to buzz through this as quickly as I can. Next week, we'll have a call to order, our invocation, pledge to allegiance. We'll have announcements, rules of procedure affected December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for November is Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty five, a work session at four P. M. Tuesday, November eleventh, two thousand and twenty five is Veterans Day, so there's no meeting scheduled. Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five, work session at four P. M. And Tuesday, November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five, regular session at seven P. M. We will have a proclamation for gatekeepers. Then next, our agenda item, citizen comments. Citizen comments on the agenda shall be limited to topics listed for consideration on the agenda and limited to three minutes. Have a public hearing, George Track ZM, two thousand and twenty five, oh two, nineteen twelve day road rezoning application. We will have our minutes for August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five, August twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five, September ninth, two thousand and twenty five, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five, September twenty third, two thousand and twenty five, and September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five. We will have our consent agenda. Under engineering, neighborhood park development, Antietam Creek Stream Access Excavating Associates, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Under fire, project runs on change orders for HFD Headquarters renovations, Elk Ridge Drive, Elk Ridge RE LLC from Frederick, Maryland, fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Under police, FY twenty six NTF reimbursement, July twenty five to June, two thousand and twenty six, Washington County Treasurer, Hagerstown, Maryland, two hundred and seventy thousand. FY twenty six reimbursement for community-based prosecutor from July twenty twenty five to June of two thousand and twenty six, Washington County Treasurer, eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Entry level recruit fees for Washington County Police Academy, eleven, nine, at twenty-five hundred dollars each, Washington County Sheriff's Office, twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. HPD Building Cleaning, Raglan Cleaning Services, Hagerstown, Maryland, twenty thousand dollars. Hornscope contactless, contactless light fingerprint system, Grim Forensics, Rocky Mountain, Virginia, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Under Public Works, Traffic Signal Cabinet, Econo Light, Glenn Bernie, Maryland, twenty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Roof repairs at thirty-two North Potomac Street to correct deficiencies by Boulevard Contractors. Garland DBS Incorporated, Cleveland, Ohio, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. Kelly HVAC Preventive Maintenance Agreement for Evaporative Cooling Tower at the Ice Rink. Kelly HVAC Incorporated, Upper Marlboro, Maryland, ten thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Two thousand and twenty five Ford Van with Aerial Mounted Bucket Mobile Lift LLC, Collegeville, Pennsylvania, one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Under utilities, water, heating oil for the R C W Water Treatment Plant, A C and T Company, Hagerstown, Maryland, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Purchase of a two thousand and twenty six Chevrolet Equinox Unit two, two fourteen, Hetrick Fleet Services, Milford, Delaware, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Purchase of a two thousand and twenty six Chevrolet Equinox Unit two, four, four, Hetrick Fleet Services, Milford, Delaware, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Water wastewater, purchase of aggregates, C. William Hetzer, Hagerstown, Maryland, thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Purchase of aggregates, Martin Marietta, Williamsport, Maryland, eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. Waste Water Treatment Plant Phone System Upgrade, Glessner Technologies, Hagerstown, Maryland, ten thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents. Purchase of a camera for infrastructure inspections, Atlantic Machinery Incorporated, Silver Spring, Maryland, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and one dollars. Unfinished business. Approval of an ordinance, amend the city code, chapter one, general provisions. Approval of an ordinance, amend city code, chapter sixty-four, building construction. Approval of an ordinance, amend the city code, chapter one, eight, five, nuisance abatement. Approval of an ordinance, amend the city code, chapter two, three, two, vacant non-residential structures. Approval of an ordinance, amend the city code, chapter two, three, three, vacant residential structures. Approval of an ordinance, amend the city code, adding chapter two, three, four, vending machines. And approval of an ordinance authorizing the purchase of an easement over the portion of that certain parcel of real estate located at seven zero three, seven zero five Mount Attle Road, Hagerstown, Maryland. Under new business, introduction of an ordinance, amendment to chapter seventy-nine, curfew for juveniles. Introduction of an ordinance, amendments to chapter sixty dash seventeen, speed camera fines. Approval of resolution, police athletically user agreement renewal. Approval of resolution, maintenance agreement with hub parking technology. Approval of resolution, accept an offer of a deed of easement and maintenance agreement, LP One LLC. Approval to apply for POS Land Acquisition Grant, easement along Antietam Creek. Approval of an MOU in reference to Pump Station Thirty-Three. Approval of holiday parking program. Approval of funding support for Community Coalition. Approval of International Association of Firefighters, sixteen oh five contract. And approval of funding support for the Washington County Historical Society. Of course, we'll have general citizen comments. General citizen comments are welcome and shall be limited to three minutes and shall be about city business. Okay, next, all right, next week, we will also have a six-thirty work session as well. And then, of course, we'll have city administrator comments, mayor and council comments, and then we will adjourn. Okay, next up, collective bargain agreement with IAFF Local sixteen oh five, Don Francis.
Good afternoon, everyone. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we have gotten a tentative agreement with sixteen oh five after several weeks of negotiation as well as mediation. What you have before you this evening is a redlined version of the contract. I certainly won't go through it all. What I will tell you is that the most noteworthy sections are Article sixteen, which is the health care benefits. As you know, we've tried to raise health care benefits for several years and have been unable to do so. The contract now provides for that, as well as Article twenty, which are the salary tables. The salary increases for FY twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight are included. They are eight percent, six percent, and five percent respectively. You will note on the salary tables themselves that there are areas that are left out of the increases that, that make sure that we can comply with the need to clause in the fifteen forty contract. I have members of the command staff of HFD here. Michelle and I are here to talk with you a little bit more about the cost of the contract. And we have a couple of members of sixteen oh five here as well to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Michelle, can you break down how much that would cost for each year? For the eight percent and the?
On the, on the salary side, yes. And I'll do it in comparison to the current salary rate as of July one, if that's okay. So for fiscal year twenty six, a full year would be an additional six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. This year two, on top of that, we would add six hundred and seven thousand dollars. And it's because in year two, we're doing the percentage, but we're also adding the longevity. longevity step. And then in year three, which is fiscal year '28, compounded on the other two, will be an additional $468,000. So 1.7 million over where we're at right now.
Like 650, 600, 450.
Yeah, 67, 677, 607, and 468.
And we programmed what, 585 in our budget for contingency? Right?
600. To cover two outstanding contracts, yes. So 77,000 in fiscal '26. As long as, and that means there's no more contingency for the other contract that remains outstanding.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, the reality is, it's going to be. So. You know, whether it's now or later. And then what about the, the apportioned amount? Is that 670 some? Does that include the, the stipend portion?
So it includes that, but what it does not include is the employer, FICA, the Social Security and Medicare portion, which is 7.65% on top of that, or the additional contribution to the police and fire pension, which is...
It's about 50 grand. Right? Anybody else? Where Don steps away, any other question?
If you want to reminder, every penny on your real estate generates 359,000 based on current assessed values before the reassessment, which should happen in another two months.
About a half a penny. Over what we've planned for. And next year, it's roughly two cents. Over what? Long-range projections have.
Over what was in...
Another penny and a half the year after that.
I only had that for reference because we did, we use that as a voting block when we talked about the others when we were in the budget process. So I just wanted to make sure.
So for the average citizen out there, you know, the, the difference here, this year, we got basically about eight bucks, right? $14 a penny. Next year is about $26, $28. And the year after that's about 20 bucks. That's what it means to the average taxpayer for your change in your average tax bill, if that, you know, be the direction the discussion would be necessary to go if you can't identify other adjustments within the budget, you know, coming up in March. Any else?
Thank you.
Next up is George Track ZM, 2025-02, 1912 Day Road rezoning application, Mr. David Bachmiller.
Good afternoon. I'll be brief. Next, at your next meeting, you're going to have a public hearing for a rezoning application for 20, roughly 22 acres of a 93-acre parcel out on Doyle Highway. This is a little bit different than some of the rezoning that you may have seen lately where they were zoning overlays, which puts an extra layer of zoning on a property. This is actually a amendment to the zoning map that changes the base zoning. Just real quick, on the exhibit that you see, the property is 93 acres. Everything to the right of that dashed line is currently zoned CG, Commercial General, which is the same as the, the area colored in orange. The applicant, and then to the right, blue, is zone neighborhood mixed use. The applicant is looking to, the property said the property is split zone. They're looking to shift the line. The property still had two zoning districts, but most of the property will be in the neighborhood of mixed use. For a piecemeal rezoning like this of the base zoning district, there's a legal test needs to be made so that information, you'll need to take testimony on during your hearing. And that's known as a change of mistake. That means that the year has to have been a change in the character of the neighborhood since the last comprehensive rezoning, which was only a few years ago. That was a mistake in the zoning and it should have been zoned something else. The applicant is not making any argument on change. They're facing it entirely on mistake. And the planning commission held a public review meeting and came to the conclusion that they agree with that argument and forwarded a positive recommendation. So that's what you have there. The 22 acres, roughly a third of it is floodplain, so there'll be no buildings built in it. The middle third of it is roughly is floodplains. So the actual developable areas are the areas to the north and the south of the floodplain. And when we had the public review, public review meeting with the planning commission, just as FYI, there was a significant amount of turnout from the surrounding neighborhood. More so concerned with the fact that the property is being developed rather than the rezoning itself. Property is currently farmed and a lot of folks are distressed at the fact that they're going to lose the farm that they are, they've, they've been living next to for a long time. But the property's been zoned high-density residential or mixed use since it's been annexed into the city almost half a century ago. So it's just now it's hitting the point where it's going to be developed, so. Do you have any questions?
It's still being farmed now.
It is, yes. It's cropped, yeah.
So. This is not the juncture in which you, you are present to convey the case of mistake?
Not here now, that'll be at the hearing next week.
I just don't want to get too far into the weeds of, of conversation.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just briefing you on the process here, mostly because the rezonings that this body has seen as it's currently constituted has been overlays. It's a different legal standard. This has certain legal tests in order to be legally valid that have to be met in order for you to approve these things. I just wanted to brief you on that.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, David. Next up, the electric phone, FY24 Cost of Service, Nathan Fryder and Nancy.
Good evening. Thank you for, thank you for having us. A couple of things on the agenda tonight. We'll start with the cost of service study. We also have GDS associates, our consultants, Francesca Winter on the line. She has her slide deck to go through. Maybe she'll have that printed. Essentially, we, as you know, we, we implemented a rate increase beginning February 25 after approval from the Maryland State Public Service Commission. That approved the rate of, rate of return of 4.26%, which is a little less than $2 million. We reviewed the audited financials for fiscal year '24, which began July 1, 2023. And to get up, to come up to the approved rate of return by the commission requires another additional 700, about $735,000, 10% on base rates. Now, when you figure in the cost of purchase power, on top of that, it amounts to about 1.2%. 1.9% increase on, on, on the whole bill. Now, I'll let Francesca start the slide deck here and let you know how we got to this number.
Can Francesca hear us?
I can, yes. And can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Uh huh. And can you see my screen now?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. And you ready for me to go ahead and start?
No, no, we can't see your screen.
We can see you, but we can't see your screen.
Oh.
And it should be the handout that we distributed at the beginning.
Okay, can you see it now? And are you ready for me to start?
Yes.
No.
So Francesca, we have paper copies that were handed out and distributed. So members of our mayor and council administration have that in front of them. Seems like we're having technical difficulties being able to share your screen and see it being reflected. But if you wish to go ahead and start your presentation, we could follow along on the paper. Is that okay with you?
Okay.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, of course. Thank you so much for having me this evening. As Nathan mentioned, we have, you know, updated rates last year and we are in the process of hopefully making a filing in November. We'll get to that. So I'm going to just kind of go over where we are today and what we've done so far from that rate change. As Nathan mentioned, I am Francesca Winter. I'm a director here at GDS, doing this kind of work for public power utilities for about 14 or 15 years now, along with providing expert witness testimony in the Hagerstown case. I also provided that in multiple other states previously. I also do, outside of this retail cost of service and rates work, I also do wholesale and transmission cost of service rates. And I have an MBA from Oklahoma Christian and a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering from Oklahoma State University. Going to move on into the rate study process and what that looks like. So we start, the first step is to determine the utility's revenue requirement. How much revenue does the utility need to operate? The second step, we move into the cost of service, where we look at how much it costs to serve our different customers in different rate classes. We did not update the cost of service this time. We did update the revenue requirements like Nathan mentioned to the fiscal year 2024, along with some additional adjustments. And then we used the same cost of service that we had used previously and just flowed that through. And then from that, we move into the rate design, which helps us determine how we're going to collect those revenue requirements that we need and which rate classes will be impacted by that. And then moving on specifically to Hagerstown. So we filed that rate case originally in 2024, and that was based on fiscal year 2023 data. We did make some adjustments to that, much as we have done this year. Again, as Nathan mentioned, that was approved by the Maryland Public Service Commission, and those rates were implemented in February of this year. In that hearing, we were given the opportunity to earn a 4.26% rate of return on rate base. And just as FYI, for those who were not a part of this last year, it had previously been 20 years since Hagerstown had updated their electric utility rates. So what we have done here, as Nathan mentioned, we started from that fiscal year 2023 data, and then we moved into the fiscal 2024 year data and used all those audited financials to make an update. And then we also made a few adjustments pertaining to some particular items around salaries and different cost increases that the utility would incur. And HLD is currently not meeting that 4.26% approved rate of return. And so now, because of that, they are able to make what the Public Service Commission calls a make-whole filing, where, like I said, we didn't have to update the cost of service, but we did update the revenue requirements and the rates. And they are allowed to get, you know, get a rate increase that does allow them to get the 4.26% rate of return. And so that's where we're focused today. And then I just left this last sliding, or this last comment in here, this was from the last presentation as well. That electric utilities strive to provide safe, reliable, and affordable power. If affordability is the only focus, safety and reliability will eventually suffer. From there, I'm going to move into how we determine these revenue requirements. Like I said, we're going to be making a make-whole filing and some additional revenue is needed. So this first column here, you know, we've got the different revenues and the different expenses, et cetera. So I've got a comparison here, just as FYI, we started from that fiscal year 2023. Right here is what those numbers look like, revenues, expenses. And then again, you know, what kind of return they were earning. At that time, it was negative, right? So the return on rate base was negative as well. And now we have moved into looking at this make-whole test year, which is fiscal year 24. And these are the same audited financials that we started from. You can see that they're actually, you know, still at a deficit on that rate of return. And then we made some adjustments here. These adjustments, I'll get a little more detail into the next slide with. But when we ended up there, we see that we are only earning a 0.58% rate of return. And remember, we were allowed to earn 4.26%. So as Nathan mentioned, it's about a $735,000 rate increase that it would take to get to that approved rate of return, which is about a 1.9% increase on total rates. And when we get to the individual slides, you will see that that is about a 10% increase to the individual components of the bill outside of those power costs. Moving into the adjustments that we made, so we, you know, moved from that fiscal year 2023 data and reflected what actually occurred in fiscal year 2024. And then from that, we made a few additional adjustments to get HLD to the place that it's at now. So there were some increased billing costs, some increased wages and salaries, some increased payroll costs that are associated with that. And then, much like in the last case, HLD is allowed to recover the rate case expenses that they incur making the filing, working with us here at GDS, and then also working with legal counsel. Are there any questions? I can't see you guys anymore, so I don't know if you have questions. But if you do have questions, please feel free to interrupt me at any point and ask those questions.
Does anybody have questions before she goes further on just this portion of it? And again, just talking about the retail rates. You're good, Francesca.
Okay, great, thank you. So from there, I'm going to move into the rate design section, starting obviously with the most important class, the residential rate class. Again, if you've seen this presentation last year, this is very similar, but updated to where we are today. So we have just over 15,000 customers in that residential rate class. And then we've got the rate components here on the bill. So this adjusted test year matches to where HLD is today, right? When they did those rate increases as of February. So the customer charge was, went to $5. The distribution component of the energy charges is this .01946. And we did go ahead and use the most recent PPCA number, which is this .10022. So you see what that gets us to what the total energy charges are. To get us to that 4.26% revenue, we are proposing a $5.50 increase to the customer charge, so about 50 cents there, which as you can see is about a 10% increase to that component of the bill. Same for the energy charge, we are moving that up to the .0214, which is about a 10% increase. The, the purchase power cost adjustment gets updated as those purchase power costs changes, and that is not part of this filing any further. So it is left where it was today, and then you can see what that gets to the total energy charge, which is where, again, you can see that for this class is a 1.6% rate increase. And then I've got a couple of different bill levels down here. So you can see as your usage, your kilowatt hours increase, the percentage that you will actually see as a rate increase goes down. So, and I've got one more slide on that as well. This slide here shows you where we are today. So for a thousand, a customer using 1,000 kilowatt hours, they are currently paying about $124.68. We are proposing with those increases that they move to $127.12, which is a 2.44% dollar increase, which is about 2% on their total bill. And then we also have a comparison here to Potomac Edison. You can see there... And then we also have a comparison here to Potomac Edison. You can see their current bill, we updated to where they are today. A customer, again, at that 1,000 kilowatt hours for them would be paying about $138.74, which is about $11.62 more than the proposed that we have for HLD, which is about a 9.1% difference. So always like to do that comparison to make sure that you guys are still remaining, obviously, competitive with Potomac Edison. And at this point, you are. Any questions on residential?
I think we're good.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the non-residential rate classes. So our general and commercial.
Francesca, I have a question.
Yes.
For the, I just want to make sure I'm following you correctly. The residential rate that is the proposed $5.50, that's what, that will be the, that's going to be the increase on each customer's bill?
So we're at the $5 today already. So that we're proposing $5.50. So it would be a 50 cent increase to the customer charge.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
And that's just the one component. So that's where she was going, one of the next slides, which I think were number 10 and 11, to show you the overall difference based on the amount of kilowatt hours, what you could see in your bill.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. Yeah, you can see here, we're at the $5. So if you used absolutely no energy at all, right? You would move from paying $5 today to the proposed amount of $5.50, which as you can see is a 50 cent increase and would be about a 10% overall rate increase. As you start to use some number of kilowatt hours, right, you can see that not only, that the dollar amount is still increasing, right? But the percentage that you're seeing overall starts to decrease as you use some amount of kilowatt hours.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And then moving on to the non-residential rate classes. Here we have the general and commercial service class, which has about 2,500 customers. Again, we've, you know, just applied the rate, the rate increase the same as we did. So we're proposing to move from $10, which is where we are today, to an $11 charge, so about a dollar there. For the demand charges, the first seven and a half KW, as always, continue to remain free. We're proposing to move from $4.47 to $4.92. And then the energy down here will move from the .01717 to .01888. And again, I'm showing the PPCA here, but just as a note that it is remaining the same and will change, you know, based upon actual purchase power costs incurred by HLD, but is not factored in any further to this rate filing. And then on the right-hand side here, I have the light and power service, has about 105 customers in that class. We are proposing to move that customer charge from $25 to $27.49, moving the demand charges from $4.75 to the $5.22. And again, moving the energy from .00208 to .00229. Any questions about the rates? And then move on to what we're calling the process and the schedule. So assuming that we are ready, we are planning to make what I mentioned earlier, the make-whole filing at the Public Service Commission. The current plan is to make that filing in November of 2025. We need to finalize all of the financials and write some testimony that will need to be submitted with that. This is very much a streamlined process compared to the last rate case, which was a full rate case. This will, as we understand it, just be reviewed by the Public Service Commission accounting staff. And so that will limit, hopefully, the time and the expense that goes into this. And as I understand it, we should be able to get that 4.26% rate increase so that HLD is earning its approved rate of return.
So it's following a similar process to what we did last year. And by the time all is said and done, we were able to implement it around the February 1st timeframe. Just to kind of put it in perspective, it will move forward and file in November.
But yeah, the make-whole filing, just basically what, what we concluded with, with the last full case filing, they just put, it's the same formula, put new numbers in it. And that's how they came to this determination. As Francesca mentioned, it is a little more streamlined, so it could, it could become approved by the commission within as early as three months, but they can extend it to any amount of time to.
And there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee that the PSC will review this and say, absolutely, as is, exactly as you recommend.
Yeah, and the Office of People's Counsel will interject. We have, we're ahead of us.
Right. But I think it's important to remember that in the full rate case, the commission did approve the 4.26%, and it is very evident from the financials that HLD is not currently meeting that.
And we fully expect with the holidays that it could take a little longer with the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays approaching very quickly.
Nathan, I hate to put you on the spot, but one thing that stands out to me here on the handout is it's been 20 years since our last increase. We receive a lot of criticism about the rate increase. Can, can you explain how the city has been able to keep that still at 20 years? Can you just enlighten the public on that?
Well, for 20 years, we did defer a lot of capital expenditures, a lot of investment in our, in our plant infrastructure, you know, poles, circuit breakers, transformers, et cetera. We did pretty much the bare minimum. Also, in 2005, there were 40 employees at the light department. We're down to 26-ish.
28 full-time.
So, yeah, we did a lot, sacrificed a lot to, to keep the rates as low as we possibly could. And at this point, there's, I don't think we can sustain any, any longer.
And a perfect example of the infrastructure and how it impacts, it's not just big projects that we are doing that nobody really sees. One of the, one of the big ones that we've been attempting to kick off the ground and try to do in a five-year cycle was replacements of the meters, right?
Right, right.
Which will give a more accurate read, which helps make things more efficient.
Yeah, we, we received a lot of criticism via social media as well as, as email. And I just wanted to make sure the public was aware that it's been this long since we've had any sort of rate and base rate increase.
Right, well, the last one, I thought that began February was, was almost 20 years, yes.
Yeah.
On the retail rate. And so we want to keep saying that because wholesale power component is totally outside of this conversation as Francesca kept mentioning, right? The wholesale power contract, which Nathan will talk about next, is the driving force. So it is a wholly separate product and component that reflects on your overall bill. We negotiate that contract, we pay more, we pass it through to the customer. There is no markup on that, it's a straight pass-through. That has changed, and that has fluctuated given our contracts. There is years since fiscal year 13, fiscal year 11, where it's decreased. There is years it's increased. And again, that fluctuates. So overall, total rate, we just, I just want to caution us, that's not what we're saying was held constant. The constant was the retail rate, which covers all of everything else, right? So all of the people, all of the infrastructure components. The storm in Easter was a prime example where we paid a lot for outside assistance. And why? You just heard Nathan describe the number of staffing that we had years ago throughout this 20-year cycle versus today, and what you can do with the difference in staffing, right? So things that have been done, but not necessarily things we should endeavor to continue to do.
Could I add something to your point there about those AMI meters? So one of the things that we had to do in the case that we filed last year was use some very old data to work in the cost of service. And one of the things that we did agree to for the next, not for this make-whole filing, but for the next full rate case that HLD will file, is that they will have AMI data in place, and we will be able to use that for all the different customers and the different rate classes. And so, you know, at some point, HLD will need to make another full rate case filing, and they will have to have all of those AMI meters in place per the settlement agreement that came out of the last rate case.
Anybody else on this topic?
Yeah, so this increase will take effect November?
No, no, we'll, we'll file with the commission in November.
Oh, so it's the valley and then they.
That's our plan. And then, then they'll begin to look at, into it, evaluate the numbers, and we'll have data requests back and forth. I'm guessing, you know, at the, at the earliest, maybe three months from November after we file it. So maybe January, February of 26.
In the past, how do we let customers know about the increase?
We publish it in the newspaper, on social media.
Prior that, like, like, no, if something goes out, they'll be like, and it's starting to take effect, then whatever month.
Put a note at the bottom of the bill. There, there will be, I'm assuming the commission will do a public hearing.
And we put it on our website last time. We, we.
The website's up to date.
We did multiple rounds of communication last.
I just know the one time we talked about it, we were gonna kind of put out like a flyer of some sort, but we were gonna put it in terms that they could understand, like, in a dollar amount versus a percentage. I just feel like that helps people understand their bill more. They know, like, a 50 cent increase versus a, you know, a percentage amount.
We actually put together, put information together in a user-friendly way, and that's was published on, and it's still on our, on the website. So they know what each of those charges are. And essentially, it also explains, you know, like, for wholesale purchase power, like Michelle was discussing, that 100% of what we're charged for that with no markup is passed through to the customer. So there's no profit or revenue to the city from the wholesale purchase. It comes from, you know, the things that Francesca was talking. So it explains what, what each of the items are, but it also explains where that money goes, that's coming in for each of those charges, the different taxes and that sort of thing.
So again, this is the first step. Our consultant, GDS and Associates, has been wonderful. Nathan, you look at him now, he's going to be a little bit more hairy. He may lose a few hairs between now and then, because when they ask for information, it's fast and furious and it's immediate. So even though it is an expediated process, and we appreciate that we're able to do it, it is still a very long process for the staff who's undergoing it. And updates will be brought back. So again, the takeaway tonight isn't that, oh, this is absolutely what we're increasing the bill to be. This is, this is what the recommendation is, built on the same calculations as the prior time and the financial impact of our financial statements from fiscal year 24, not fiscal year 25, fiscal year 24. Step one. Then it gets filed with the PSC. There'll be a lot of back and forth, and they'll say, yeah, this looks good, maybe this, maybe that. Here's what you can have. Nathan will, will make sure that council is updated, just like we did the last time. Then, from there, we would communicate to the customers the exact.
And if I recall, it took us a month or so, once the commission approved the rate increase, to allow us, one, to get the note on the bill, two, to get our, our billing system updated with the new rates. And so when we implement them, we always implement them based on the first, if you will, book in. We go from Division 11 to Division 23. So we start with, we never start in the middle of the cycle. So we'll start, so there's, there'll be a delay, if you will, associated with being able to start with the first book in the bill cycle. But we also need the time to get the notes on the bills and to get the legwork done so that the bills can be produced. And Michelle's team actually does, you know, does the vast majority of that work once Nathan completes everything with the Public Service Commission.
Anything else on that?
Thank you for your time, Francesca. We appreciate you being here.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Francesca.
Uh huh, thank you.
Great. Next up is the electric wholesale power contract.
All right, yeah, just to update you on where we are with the wholesale power contract. Our current contract expires December 31, 2026. The energy rate, the energy component of that is $54.05 per, per megawatt hour, which is basically 5.4 cents per kilowatt hour. We performed a, an RFP over the, over the summer months and using the same processes that we, that we do now with purchasing power. Like, we, we purchase now based off all energy delivered. It's priced at all energy delivered. And those prices came in at about 57, 58, and 69, 55, depending on the, the vendor and their, their pricing at the time. There's also an option for fixed load shape. If you look at fixed load shape, it defines certain blocks within your, your usage. And there's, there's different methods to, to purchase, like 24 hours a day, seven days a week. During the work week, five days, five days a week at eight hours, and then the weekends, two days, or 16, I believe. And those prices come in at 52, between 52, 60, 55, 50. Now, they are more desirable, but if you, if more energy is delivered than what was defined in that purchase block, then you're subject to the market rate. And who knows what the market will be at that time? If you look at the, the back page, that's just a graph of where, where the market has trended, how the market has trended between June 1st, 2023, and the time of the pricing, which we received at the end of July this year. Yeah, we grabbed it at, I guess, in October, 5405. And there's price figures, yeah, or at the end, they're defined on the graph. Now, it is, the graph does indicate four different lines, not really easily differentiated on this graph. But the bottom two are the 27, 28, calendar year 27, 28 figures. Those are the, those are the energy prices that, that we plan to lock in.
And we're talking calendar 27, calendar 28, that's every year.
Correct.
Just to make sure that.
Now, we've been watching the price, monitoring the prices since July. They have trickled up slightly and they're sort of plateauing out at this moment. We do have some time, you know, we have through calendar year 26 to, to lock in a price. But we don't want to get in a situation like you see here in April 24, where the market's all, all wacky. So probably going to recommend a load following price to be more conservative and, and lock it in as, as soon as we have some live, nail down a live pricing date with our, our consultant.
Can you say that last part again? A load following price?
Load following price is, yeah, we have locked in at a price for all energy delivered.
We're not going to do a two-tier.
We, we can, if you.
No. In my experience, I find those to be fairly gimmicky in their approach. It sounds good on the paper that they deliver, but then when you, you know, put it into practice, if you might just buy it, already buy it, call it that.
Yeah. And the prices indicate that, you know, $57.58 compared to $52.60, that's that $5, that $5 difference flips the risk over from the, the wholesale provider over to us. So.
Which means a big swing, right?
It, it could be.
Because we, because we pass it through.
Yeah.
Again.
So I think when you look at this information and then look at the, the, the conversation prior to this, to accentuate Michelle's point, if you're a Potomac Edison customer that lives in the city like myself, you're not seeing a five and a half cent rate, right? I mean, I don't. I mean, I, I don't, I don't get that. So people in the city and the old city boundary that do see that, they get a rate that, that you're not getting as a PE customer. That's just the bottom line. And, and that's, you know, that's the ability for the city to, to negotiate, you know, the, the fact that you're buying it for 20,000 customers and not, you know, one customer at a time, right? It's similar to how we get a great rate on garbage collection, right? But if you live out in some neighborhood, you know, outside of the city, you're not getting that rate because you, you're not, you know, you're not negotiating garbage collection for your entire neighborhood. But I, to get back to Michelle's point, which I appreciate, you know, you see that 5.4 and you go, wait a second, you know, why am I not seeing that on my bill? One is, so the first half of that is you're getting a rate that you're not gonna get elsewhere. And that rate's changing over time. But, but the second point is, the reason you're not seeing that is we still have to do those same things that those direct energy suppliers do to provide energy. And we have two choices, right? You can either do those things and continue to operate an electric system and negotiate cheaper purchase power, or you can sell that system over to a private entity, and they're gonna charge you the going rate because they're gonna do that stuff. We happen to be able to get it cheaper. So let's say I'm a Potomac Edison customer, and they've got a fixed poles and do all that they do, and they charge me 10 cents, right, a, a total rate. But you're able to get the purchased part at 5 cents. Then you're able to do the, the upgrade stuff for 2.5 cents, which is what saves you that marginal savings of having to pay PE directly, which saves you that 2.5 cents on every kilowatt hour that you use. That's how I kind of see it.
Right, and well, the 5.5 cents that you're looking at here in this presentation represents just the energy component of the purchased power. You know, purchased power averaged today is about 10 cents, based off the last presentation. The, the other 4.5 cents is renewable energy requirements and capacity, like we talked about a couple of months ago.
Head around, right around the summertime, and it's felt nationwide.
Transmission, a few other things. So all-in purchase power is about 10. But at least we can, we can lock in on this.
Right.
This energy component.
Yeah.
Now.
And it's not an easy concept, but it's not an easy concept to explain because there's no way to make it, to break it down more than this, right? Councilmember, I'll share the idea because it was, that helps.
And I think for me, as much as I sit here every iteration of this, where we go through these contracts, and I feel like I've been here and done a number of them, I think that we forget about the other component. And as a manager for a small town, I get to see that directly because we don't own and operate and distribute our own electric utility. We depend on Potomac Edison to do that. We depend on Verizon and other entities. And those other entities own that infrastructure, and they get the ancillary benefit, which is especially good given the age and proliferation of the internet era, of being able to own those poles and then make money as well on the fact that you own that infrastructure that other utility entities need. Whereas in other towns that don't have that infrastructure, those private parties that own that infrastructure in, in your municipality make the money on those utility poles and things that, that, you know, the ancillary stuff that, that, that other utility entities need. So you have to also factor in that equation that it isn't simply a matter of you're getting a cheaper electric rate. You have infrastructure that you're actually making some additional funding on by contracting with other utilities that want to be on those poles too.
And I, I think, and I'm sorry because I know it's been a long night, and I appreciate everybody hanging in there with us. I, I, we would be remiss if we did not do one final reminder, and we should have done that in the very, very beginning, right? Well, but as the city grows, and as the city's getting new customers, and the city's expanding, and we're annexing, and we're bringing in all this stuff, that does not apply to our Hagerstown Light Department. We were locked into a boundary years and years and years ago, and we cannot expand it. I repeat, we cannot expand it, right? So there's people inside the city of Hagerstown who cannot get Hagerstown Light Department because we cannot cross that boundary. So we do have some residents who have to pay those other higher costs.
I do.
Yes.
But I think, but I think that point is more important for the people at this table.
Yes.
Because the more we can encourage redevelopment and reinvestment in that square that we're confined to, the more we get those buildings up and back in use and operational and functional and marketable, the more those buildings are going to be using the electric.
Yes.
That benefit that fund. So the more vacant buildings we have in that boundary, which is the core of the city, the less we are doing and able to make on that electric system that we want to keep running.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the water wastewater rates.
We have a busy night tonight. So we indicated several months ago that we would come back in the October, November time period and present kind of a progress report where we're at, some of the alternatives that we're, we're looking at to kind of get your insight and to make sure that we're on the right track.
And Nancy, before, before you continue, before you do our introductions, we would be, gotta stop and remember, we'd be remiss. We've got four new people at the table. So we do want to take the opportunity to just remind you, unlike what we just talked about with electric, and the PSC comes into play with the calculations and what we're billing, this water and wastewater at the city of Hagerstown is not under the authority of the Public Service Commission. Our rates are set and established here at this table. So this conversation is very good. Thank you, Nancy, for coming back and doing the updates.
And also, I want to be clear, we're not making any recommendations this evening. This is just to present the progress where we're at. That's what we had indicated we would do. And also to kind of build on what Michelle indicated, the only way that if somebody challenged our rates, then and only, and the Public Service Commission decided to, they considered that challenge to be valid, then and only then would the Public Service Commission become involved with our rates. That's why, one, we, Municipal Financial Services has been working on our rates since 2005 or before. That's why we have a rate consultant, somebody, and, and entity that is an expert in the field and can work through all of this, all of the data and the processes to, to help us to make good decisions. I do have Mike Maker with me, with Municipal Financial Services.
NewGen, no, but.
I'm sorry, NewGen. We still, they've changed. They merged, and we started as NewGen, or Municipal Financial Services, and they are NewGen. And Connor is with us, and of course, Ashley's our financial manager. And we are going to start with wastewater tonight. And kind of just to remind everybody with wastewater, there wasn't really any concern about the, the design, the, the rate. It's the design of the model itself. It's a one-tier system, one-size-fits-all. What was requested on the wastewater side was to, we, we have to kind of put a good program in place that looks at the wastewater, wastewater deduct meters, submetering irrigation meters, and so forth. But you may recall with the, one of the amendments to the, to the Joint Sewer Service Area Agreement, it added the McDade, the McDade Road subdivision was added into that agreement. They, they are located inside of the, inside city limits. However, their wastewater will flow through, initially flow through city, city sewer infrastructure into a county pump station. And so we needed to, as part of those discussions, we needed to develop an inside joint sewer rate so that all users, users on the system were paying their, their fair share, that nobody was subsidizing anybody else. Once we get through that, we'll talk about the water rates and the various alternatives that we looked at. And when we get to the water rates, the, we, we did keep the current design in there as a status quo. And then we have three additional alternatives for you to look at based on our previous discussions. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike.
Yes, thank you for having me. See some familiar faces and some new faces as well. Well, if you have questions along the way, just stop me. Just, is there a presentation on there? Just go with you.
You can just go with me.
So slide two, just our guiding principles and objectives. So both funds should be financially self-supported. Since they are enterprise funds, they cannot be borrowing from the general fund or any other funds. As utilities, they should not make a profit. Certainly, it could be a year, one year where you have a surplus of funds, and you sign that to reserve, but we're not looking for making a profit here. Want to maintain reserves, just like you do with your own finances at home. You want to make sure of providing contingencies, unplanned expenses. And then we want to make sure we keep rates as low as possible over time. And I vitalize over time here because we can defer maintenance, not invest in the system. And then, you know, several years down the road, we're gonna have a huge pipe break or something like that, gonna have a, a big increase in rates. So we want to incrementally finance the rates over time and cover inflation and things like that. So our objective is to ensure rates are stable through sound financial management, system maintenance. We do that by reviewing the funds and then developing a financial plan. So slide three, this is the assumptions or the factors that affect charges and rates. So as you know, your O and M expenses is a, is a major component. That's your salaries, benefits, supplies, materials. After discussion with staff, we've escalated chemicals by 3% per year. Health insurance, retirement, electricity by 5% per year. Your payment on the taxes and admin overhead were not escalated, so we maintained the same cost for those. And everything else was roughly escalated by inflation or so, but 1.5%, 2%. CIP is obviously a huge determinant of what the rates are gonna be. That's gonna be your investment in the treatment, distribution, collection systems. So we look at your entire capital plan over the next five to 10 years. Debt service, that's both existing debt service you're currently paying, so principal and interest payments you're paying right now. And any capital projects you're in a debt fund would equal your future debt. So those two together there. We look at customer changes, so about, we're looking at about a half percent increase in customers year over year based on historical trend. And then separately, we look at actual usage. So you could be adding a handful of customers every year, but we're finding they're not using much usage per capita. So while we're doing a half percent in customer changes, we're keeping your usage relatively flat. And then miscellaneous revenues, that's anything other than, you know, your rates and charges. There, we're looking at about 1% per year. And then we have these recommended two reserves. So your minimum operating, operating reserve, it's kind of like your rainy day fund, it's typically tied to your operating expenses. So as those increase, so should that fund balance. There, we're looking to 180 days, which is about 50% of your operating expenses. And then what we call a three-hour repair, renewal, replacement reserve, that's more for your capital investment. So you don't have to run out in bond fund if something happens, you know, a pipe break or something like that. And those, you've capped at 100%, 100,000 per year contribution, and then 200,000 per year if needed each year. Slide four, just a graphic representation of the different costs of the system, what we call the revenue requirement, the revenue required to be collected. So again, at the base, there are the operating expenses. After that, any current debt service, any cash funding capital projects. So that's any project who would come out of revenues in that year. New debt service, and then the reserve company. So slide five, as Nancy mentioned, we're doing wastewater first here. This is just wastewater. You can see our current year of fiscal year 2026. And you can see these different column charts here. So the blue is the operating expenses. The red is the debt service. Green is cash funding of projects. And then purple is new debt service. And then there's a little bit of reserve contribution. That light blue line going horizontally across, that's what you're bringing in now, revenue at current rates. And then the sloping line up to the right there, that's proposed rate. So what that purple or dark blue line represents is roughly a 3% increase each year of a year in revenue. So if we just maintain the current rate design, roughly everybody's see a 3% increase. It's gonna be more important on water where we have different alternatives, but the wastewater should stay roughly the same. Slide six is the impact then to the cash balance. So you can see where your cash is now in blue, and then the green is our target balance. So that green is 180 days. So as long as we're above that 180 days, we're meeting that cash balance. And slide seven shows the one alternative we mentioned. So the current rate design right now, you have a fixed fee that varies by meter size. And you have customers either monthly or quarterly. They're either inside, outside, or joint customers. So the joint customers right now, that, those are customers. And I have some notes at the bottom here. That's where wastewater flows from the county collection system, and then it's treated by the city. And then the alternative we're looking at would be establishing for some inside joint customers. So that's where they, they would pay city collection system, and then their wastewater is treated by the counties. It's kind of the opposite of what the outside joint. You also have usage fees that are charged per 1,000 gallons, and those again could be inside, outside, or joint. We just showed what the average percentage of revenue right now is, is received. So about 60% is coming from inside customers, almost 30% from outside, and then, you know, 13% from joint. So if we can maintain the current rate date design, roughly everybody'd see around that 2 to 3, 2 to 4% increase for next year. The alternative adds the inside joint, and that would then just shift some revenue coming from joint to inside joint as well. Slide eight shows a comparison of the fixed fees for inside, inside joint, outside, outside joint. So here, we're just comparing current year, 2026, with next year, 2027. And the majority of your customers, you know, for some of the newer folks, they're probably in the 5/8, 3/4 inch meter size here. That's a lot of residential customers. You might have some really large residential that maybe is a 1-inch, but everybody else above that's really non-residential. I mean, you probably only have a handful of maybe 8 or 10-inch. It's gonna be a really large customer there. And then the usage fees per 1,000 gallons. And then we always say customers don't really care what their rates are. They wonder what their bill's gonna be. So slide nine shows a bill impact. And again, this is just for the wastewater bill. We have three different customers. A single-family customer, about 150 gallons per day, which is 13,500 gallons per quarter. A multifamily commercial customer at 450,000 gallons. So that's a really large multifamily. And then a really large commercial at 750,000 gallons. So as I mentioned before, you know, single-family, they're typically gonna be a 5/8 inch meter. Their bill right now is $138. That goes 142. So you're looking at about $4.57 increase. And you can see a commercial down with a lot larger dollar amounts. Nancy mentioned looking at, so we're on slide 10 here, different ways to assist non-residential customers who not all their water goes into the wastewater system, right? So you think of maybe a customer that's irrigating, right? That water's going into the ground, it's not going into the sewer system. Maybe like cooling towers, things like that, bottling plants. So we're just starting to think of an equitable way of, of how can we account for that, that, that water does not be discharged into the wastewater system.
And I will interject here, just as a reminder. This is one of the tools in our toolbox to not oversell wastewater allocation as a way that we can help, that we can better manage capacity in our wastewater system. Historically, wastewater was equal to metered water. So by moving forward in this direction, and as you know, you guys have approved a couple deduct meters or, you know, alternatives. We have three of them right now that allow us to help manage, you know, helps us to manage that wastewater capacity. And so we've talked about these numerous times. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the reason behind it that, to, to remind you is, it's one of our tools.
And slide 11 just shows some of those tools. So I think you're employing some of these now. These are just some of the common industry ways of accounting for that water not returning to the wastewater system. So as Nancy mentioned, submetering. So as Nancy mentioned, sub-metering, you know, that's where you attach uh, additional components to your current meter that would track what water's not going into the sewer system, so you can bill accurately from that. Uh, you can directly meter the actual sewage, so if you didn't have, even have a water meter, you could put a meter right on the sewer flow. Uh, I think it's a little more accurate than sub-metering. You have to make sure it's calibrated and things like that, though it can be expensive. And as I mentioned before, things like irrigation, um, you could have an irrigation only meter, right? So then there's, you're not even metering things going into the sewer system, it's just metering what's being, you know, irrigating on a golf course or something like that, large lawns.
And this body has actually approved one of each. The sub-metering um, is a five sixty Western Maryland Parkway District Cannabis. The sewer flow, the sewer flow metering is um, New Cold. And uh, the Board of Education um, was the irrigation meters.
Any question on wastewater before we move on to waters?
Yeah, so going back to page eight, the projected wastewater fee is alternative one. Uh, the column on the left, quarterly fixed fee. Uh, so the fixed fee is associated with the fixture size.
Meter size.
Meter size. And um, and then going on to page nine. So those are based on, those are based on usages, are those, are those? Are those base rate, base, base rate usages?
And they include the fixed charge as well.
It's the total bill, so it's fixed fee which is collects about what, twenty five percent of the required revenue.
Maybe, maybe I should ask it in a different way. Let's say I'm, let's say I'm a, a, a resident customer, single family home. And my, I got a fixed, I got a fixed fee, right? Base rate. And then it's, it's so much per thousand gallons after that. So uh, so whatever our fixed fee is, and then so much per thousand gallons. So let's say that um, uh, I'm the, you know, I'm the residential meter size and um, I use ten thousand gallons. You charge me a, a per thousand gallon rate for that, right? If I use fifty thousand gallons, you still charge me the same per thousand gallon rate for that, right?
For wastewater, yes.
And if I keep going up, let's say you have a hundred thousand gallons. Same unit, okay, so, so the thing is I expressed in our prior uh, discussion on this. I think that's where I have some concern. Because it is a flat rate model. And I, I would have an interest in a model that's not a flat rate model.
A lot of times you're trying to send like pricing signals for conservation or something like that with tiers.
Well, it's not conservation, in other words, if you take, if you take a, a wastewater facility, um, and let's say nobody used anything. Right, nobody used anything for a quarter, um, you would have a, you would have a fixed cost. Right, you still got to employ the people, you still got to, you know, you still got to manage the systems, you've got to send in your weekly reports, et cetera, et cetera. You got to do all that stuff. On average, on average, let's say that that fixed cost is roughly seventy, somewhere between seventy, seventy-five percent of um, the operations of a wastewater system. But about twenty-five percent of that is generated by additional usage, higher usage customers. So at some point, those higher usage customers should uh, be rightly absorbing that escalated cost for, for management of that system. In other words, it isn't about, it isn't about conserving because it's on the wastewater side. And you know, it's what you're, you're putting into the stream system, it's, it's, you know, it's the, the uh, production running of the plant. The wastewater system, huge, you know, electricity user when, when it's got a, you know, run full bore and, 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 you know, do beyond. And you know, there, there are some um, instances, uh, days, weeks, periods of the year where, where you have higher than normal uh, flow at the system that you're having to account for. And those generate additional cost, not as much as they do on the water side, obviously. But it does exist on the sewer side, and all I'm saying is, to me, it is odd to me that we have a flat rate system and not at least some form of a tiered rate system to ensure that the average user isn't being charged for that higher volume production in those periods where the higher volume producers are causing the higher than uh, static, uh, you know, cost of operations to the system.
So you're suggesting an additional tier on wastewater at a higher rate?
I think there should definitely be a tiered system of, of, applied to the wastewater.
It's just not as common as due to wastewater, just because you don't really have a lot of control in your wastewater, because it's kind of your water in is your wastewater out. So usually we do that on the water side, where you send those pricing signals. It's kind of hitting them twice, I guess, if you do it in water and then again on wastewater. Maybe if you had a wastewater only customer, right, then it would only be affecting them, but.
Well, I mean, in our case, you know, given the fact that, that what, twenty percent of our customers are outside of the corporate limits and a lot of the large uh, entities in which uh, you know, utilize our wastewater system, uh, you know, can be of, of a higher type of user, then I think that, that it does beg that, that question if those average static cost users are at least to some degree subsidizing that higher volume user that's creating tho- those uh, peaks, you know, in those usages.
I mean, you do have an outside array, so they are charged more on the.
They're charged more, they're charged more namely because of the uh, full faith and credit process applied to, to the debt we incur on the system, not because they're higher users.
A lot of those customers um, also have larger meters, so they're paying um, their fixed fees are considerably higher as well. I know, that's twenty percent.
They're, they're paying a fixed fee for that higher meter because are, are they or are we responsible for placement of, of that meter?
This, the city maintains the meter. But that's done solely through water. Um, on the wastewater side, this fixed fee, um, as it does on the water, it represents about between twenty and twenty-five percent of the required revenue to operate the, in this case, the wastewater system. Um, and then the remaining uh, usage fees uh, represent the balance of what is needed to operate the system. We can certainly look at an inclining tier for wastewater.
I just, I find it odd that we have the argument at this table, or, or not the argument, I should say, that, that we, that we posit at this table that, you know what? If you're not going to be a heavy sewer user and you can prove to us that you're not going to be a heavy sewer user from the water you're, you're receiving from us, you're not going to put it all in the system, you get a credit, because you're not putting that in the sewer system. But, but if you're a heavy sewer user and you're increasing impact to the operational cost of the plant, you don't get a penalty. And I don't want to call it a penalty, but you know what I mean, you're saying you get a credit for not using that much, but you don't get charged more if you use a lot more than the average expected user.
Now, for all.
That doesn't make a lot of sense.
For all non-residential customers that use twenty-five thousand gallons or more per day of either metered water or metered wastewater, they are um, they are, we, we're required to issue them a pre-treatment permit. When their wastewater strength exceeds um, what is considered a typical headworks loading wastewater strength, a municipal waste stream. Then they are surcharged um, based on um, established rates in city code. So um, those, those large users, um, Smack Truck as an example, Conagra is another example where they are billed um, outside of this rate system for higher strength wastewater, and they are customers that use twenty-five thousand gallons or more per water a day. That's how um, the Clean Water Act, that's where they draw, where they draw the line. We also have a couple um, categorical that they don't use anywhere near that amount of water. But based on their process, um, based on, on their business process, they fall into a categorical um, definition. Up at the airport, um, Sierra Nevada is, is um, a categorical. Um, and they uh, they batch discharge. When, when and if needed, they would do um, batch discharges. They don't continuously discharge into our system, but they have to, they can only discharge a waste stream in our system that meets a certain standard. Um, and they're categorical, so there, there is for those high strength wastewater, higher strength wastewater users at twenty-five thousand gallons or higher. There is another system in place.
Yeah, that's a good point, that wastewater typically looks at the strength of the sewage as opposed to the peaking of the system, so. You have those pre-treatment things, programs like that. But yeah, I mean, we can certainly look at it, if we want to, look at it to figure out where the cutoff, I guess, would be.
Certainly, any other questions, comments on wastewater?
We got a little more moving parts of water, so bear with us as we explain. I'm on slide twelve. There's the same chart I showed before, but for water, again, operating expenses in blue, debt service in red, cash funding project in green, and then new, new debt service from capital projects in purple, and there's a little bit of reserve contribution in that. Again, these are also three percent annual increases to revenue. So it doesn't, so when we get to the alternatives, not every customer will see a three percent, some are going to see higher, some are going to see lower. But total revenue, we're trying to keep it apples to apples, so every alternative we show will bring the same uh, revenue, but affect customers differently. And then the impact of the balance, operating balance on thirteen, again, making sure we're maintaining that target balance. And then slide fourteen, there's the current rate design and the alternative one, and then the next slide will show this, uh, two and three. We'll kind of step through, so it's kind of stepwise here. So right now, there's, there's, there's a few moving parts for water, you again have that fixed fee like wastewater has. But here, instead of the usage fees being a unit rate where everybody pays the same for thousand gallons, you have inside, outside and wholesale. And you have a two-tier residential, so residential has two tiers right now and it's inclining blocks. What that means, the more you, once you hit a certain cutoff, the more you use it, it costs more per unit at that point. We do that to try to promote conservation and show that pricing signal that there's a value to water. But for non-residential, when this was set up years ago, I think there was a desire to promote economic activity, bring some non-residential industries to the city, so that's actually a declining block where the more you use, the less you pay. So as a really large commercial uses a lot of water, they're almost getting a little bit of a discount once they hit that certain tier. Um, again, we show the average percentage of revenue where it's coming from, from the volume, so we're getting right now about forty-three percent of revenue from residential, or fifty percent non-residential, and then you do have a few wholesale customers, we have contracts for those. They have a sixteen percent discount, I think. Um, so in, under the current rate design, if you didn't change anything, everybody roughly see about a three percent increase, just like wastewater. But once we introduce these alternatives, so the first alternative, what we're doing here is we're taking that two-tier non-residential that I talked about, that, that declining block, and we're kind of averaging them out, so there's no longer a declining block, it's just one rate, so it's a unit rate only for non-residential. That's the change there. What that necessar- this, what that would do is a really large non-residential customer who is getting that discount is now going to pay a higher rate for that, that usage, so they're going to see a larger increase in their bill than they would have under the current rate. That's that green there. But now, stepping through to the next alternative, alternative two is the same as alternative one, however, now we're also averaging out the block street for residential. I know it's confusing because the commercial was a declining, residential was an inclining. But we're still keeping what we did in alternative one, but now we're also averaging out the rates for residential. And so what that essentially is doing is that large user for residential was paying more, now since it's averaged out, they're paying less than they would have under that rate sign. And then three, what that does is it's essentially maintaining one and two, but now we're not even having a difference between residential and non-residential. Everything's blended together, so now there's one unit rate for all classes. Now, I think it'll be a little more evident when we actually show an example here. Slide sixteen, I think it might be a little more helpful.
And I do want to mention, um, the wholesale rate um, is a sixteen percent discount. That is incorporated into city code when the rates are approved, but it's also um, in each of the contracts uh, with the the three wholesale customers, Smithville, Funkstown and Williamsport.
So slide sixteen will provide a little more context, we show actual numbers here. So again, it has a quarterly fixed charge, we're not really changing that, you'll see it's the same across the board for, for all twenty twenty-seven bills. When we go down to the bottom for the usage rates, so I mentioned there's a, a tier break for residential, it's eighteen thousand gallons per quarter here. If you use over eighteen thousand gallons, which I don't think there's a lot of customers that do on that, and that'd be a really large residential customer.
Do that.
They um, they would, they pay more. A large family.
So, I think this gets back to the same point that I raised like a year and a half ago when we were in this room, right? As a residential customer for the City of Hager, it sounded just, single house. And the first two alternatives provided.
All one, all two?
Yeah. As a residential customer, I still pay more than a commercial customer.
And that's why we alternative three.
We're one size fits all.
Yeah, I was just circling, I'm going to get helpful into this.
Yeah, which, which still doesn't make sense. In other words, I go back to, to, to that static production process, which again is more impactful on the water side than the sewer side. Uh, right, because you're, you're, you're boosting production. Now, I pay the same as a commercial customer who is creating in some instances, and especially in the uh, deduct meter instances, exponentially larger draws on the system.
Well, so a lot of places have an inclining block for residential, because it's usually residential that's causing the system to peak, and why you have to turn on different pump stations.
Yeah, but, but we're doing that to wash our dishes and give our kids baths and things like that that we do on a daily basis for basic household needs, right?
But everybody's doing it at the same time, eight in the morning, everybody's doing it at six P M.
What I'm saying is, we're, we're not, we're not, we're not doing that to sell a product.
Well, it's not, it, it's not the purpose of the water, it's the, you know, it's how it affects the system. We were taking out any discrimination equity in terms of what, what your intended use of the water is, it's how you're affecting the, the water system. Uh, non-residential, usually it's kind of flat, like throughout the whole day, it's just, you know, it's, it's for business operation, it's not, you're really looking at, why did you have to build this additional pump station, why did you have to expand your treatment plant because of this peaking during the day?
I think it's flat depending on the type of user. And we, we have, we have approved some fairly significant usages, and in fact, I think it's staff that's come in this room the last two years in a row and said, uh, these warehouses and things that we've approved, they come in and say, ah, we need five thousand gallons, and they end up, the first year through, they're using sixteen, twenty, thirty thousand gallons of water.
Yeah, we have, we have one customer that is, is doing that, the other ones are, are staying. They're pretty level, um, it's uh, Amazon, um, on Creighton Boulevard that uses quite about thirty-five hundred dollars in allocation and they're probably averaging around twenty-five to thirty thousand gallons.
And they should pay an additional benefit fee if they're using over their reserve capacity.
They, they do.
Yeah.
Or they, they will.
What you're essentially saying is you should be assigning, you're saying you should be assigning more revenue to the non-residential, you want that rate to be higher than the residential?
Yes, I'm saying that there should be a residence when a commercial tiered structure, an inclining tier structure that applies to those usages as they incline on both those types of usages as it applies to the demand to produce water and put it into the system.
You want them both to be inclining, you said?
I think that there should be an incline to both.
Oh.
As it applies.
Get rid of the incline.
As it applies. No, 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 I, when we had a conversation last time, I said there's no way a commercial entity should pay less.
Oh, are you, okay, how was that? Are you saying remove the classes but still have an inclining block?
I'm saying that both types of usages should have an inclining scale because of that static level of production on both sides. Residential because the sheer volume of residential percentage on the system and commercial because of the exponential escalation in usage demand on any given day, depending on their productivity, create that additional impact on the system.
I mean, because what you can do.
For example, for example, everybody comes home for, everybody thinks that in the winter, right, everybody's usage is low, and that's not the reality. In fact, the last quarter of of the calendar year typically is one of the highest because everybody's home for the holidays, right? And so that usage for that particular quarter on the residential side, my bulk demand goes up, which means that's a bigger increase to the system. So on the average throughout the year, I may, I may, if I'm lucky, I may hit the under eighteen thousand level. I may at my house. But holiday, there's no way I'm hitting twenty five or thirty, you know, for that particular quarter, and that creates a higher demand on the system. When I get above that tier, whatever that tier is, I should be charged more for that tier. No differently than when that commercial entity, and let's say it's a McDonald's, right? They have been flowed through the course of the year. Summertime, they may do two seventy in McDonald's, and in the winter, they may see a hundred and eighty. When that happens, they're creating a higher demand on the system, and there should be a higher per thousand gallon charge for those escalating levels because that's the demand on the system.
But you could remove the classes and have one inclining block designed that both residential and non-residential go through.
That's not what I, so. So if I heard Councilmember Alshire correct, he wants the classes. He wants a residential versus a commercial in that they both should have an inclining tier, but that not a residential should be paying at, you know, the base level per gallon, the same necessarily as a non-residential, which is, I think, right? You were still using two classes, and you were still using an inclining tier. And your example that I just heard you give.
Yeah.
I felt.
And I'm offering another, I'm saying offering.
No, I just.
You're trying to, if you're trying to turn an inclining block, you can, well, I have the tiers. But I might have, do I have the class? Make one class. They can both go through a residential when we hit the higher tiers.
Because I think residential should be starting at a different base rate and inclining scale than commercial.
So these have all maintained how much revenue you have received historically from residential, non-residential? We didn't look and say, this is how much should come from residential? How much should? I don't think you're going to get the answer you want if you do that analysis.
Oh, you're definitely going to see that it's more from residential.
Yeah, so it's not.
I understand that.
So residential, starting at a different rate, you also mentioned that residential, that, um, commercial residential shouldn't be the same. So should residential be a lesser rate?
It should one hundred percent, one hundred percent should be a lesser rate from the outset.
I know that's what you're saying. I just don't think it's going to come out the way you want it to.
Councilman mentioned that last year several. And I, and I know, I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily, I just want to make sure that I'm hearing correctly. I don't, I don't think I'm hearing that, at the end of the day, that, that the base level when this class would have no change in in.
Right.
The revenue, and everybody else could be paying more. I think the acknowledgement is, it's a restructure. Everybody could end up paying more. However, he wants separate classes.
The shared difference is going to be different.
Correct, it's inclining.
Right.
You may want to reduce three tiers for residential then. So then somebody can really conserve, stays at a super low rate, like a lifeline rate. It's just your essential cooking and cleaning.
I think you'll find that many municipalities have more than three tiers.
I would say three or four. I wouldn't go much more than that.
I know, but I'm saying, and they do that with the recognition that there are a significant number in City of Hagerstown, for example, sixteen percent, right? We're double that of the county, sixteen percent of individuals within the city are senior citizens. And a lot of municipalities recognize that senior citizens on average use less than about five thousand gallons.
Right.
Uh, per quarter. And so they set a rate, or at least a base rate or some rate thereof, to account for those folks that are, uh, in that classification of usage and may have a higher degree, uh, potentially of fixed income.
It'll greatly help them. It's not going to help your large families if you start introducing.
It definitely won't. And listen, I'm a guy who has five kids. I completely understand that it may, at the end of the day, increase me a bit.
Okay, good.
But I also, but I also accept the fact that, again, holiday time, I should pay that. Because that impact is what I'm creating on the system. I'm happy to sit here and argue against my own benefit because that's for the benefit of the fairness within the system.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of times you maybe say it's three tiers. You'll have the minimum usage tier, you'll have median customers, typical average, and then a, then really extra usage, you know, extreme. People who are irrigating their lawns and don't even care. That would be like the third tier.
Yes, the people that call in and want deduct meters for the irrigation system they put out front of the house.
Yeah.
No thanks.
And the the eighteen thousand gallons that we currently have for residential, that was tied to allocation. Because a residential customer, when they come onto the system, they pay for one E D U or two hundred gallons a day, which is eighteen thousand gallons per quarter. So that second tier was set there. It was part of the reason it was established at eighteen thousand gallons because the additional revenue then that is collected there is is essentially paying for that additional capacity in in the system. Because residential customers, we do not go back and bill them additional allocation if they use over two, consistently over two hundred gallons a day. So just want to make sure everybody understands where that eighteen thousand gallon tier comes from. And then I also want to ask this question. I don't know if everybody is aware of this. When we talk about residential and non-residential, residential is single-family, single-family homes, if you will. Residential multi, they fall in the non-residential category for billing. So if you have a house that it has, that's been divided and is now four apartments in the current system, in the current billing system, current rates, you're residential multi, and you're on a declining tier. The non-residential also includes residential, commercial, where you have a commercial on the first floor, maybe a business. And then on the second floor, on the upper levels, you have apartments. So in the non-residential, you have customer, you have two sets of customers in here. One that is strictly, it's all residential, it's just multi-unit. And then you have a mixed residential, commercial. So when we're looking at these tier, when we're, when we're looking at this, one of the questions that I would ask from a guidance perspective, do you want to keep those designations the way they are? Residential, multi-residential, commercial in the non-residential category?
It's probably not.
If someone is in a townhome, I would still consider them residential versus non-residential.
She's talking about like, like the eight-unit apartment building.
Yeah.
Well, if that's the case, I, I don't find that that designation to be how we treat of the application of solid waste collection, right? Any differently.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, in other words, don't, when we, when we bill that that eight-unit apartment building to collect trash, don't we, don't we apply a trash collection to each unit?
Yes, we do.
You can do that by unit.
Why would we view, why would we view the, like, why would we view the provision of water and sewer differently?
Well, well, there's still.
Oh, well, I feel like you're asking, should we take that back out of the commercial designation?
That's exactly what I'm asking.
I'm saying no.
Okay.
Well.
Well, just me, because, because we don't do that for our other, our other utility and facility provisions.
Well, right now, those those apartment complexes are getting the benefit of declining block rate.
That's exactly right. That's my first. I mean, I mean, I, I could, I could move into, I could move into to the, the same place and rent and and be in a six-unit place, right? And and.
What I'm saying.
And then suddenly I'm paying less for water.
If those are the customers we want to protect, those are going to be our, our small customers.
You do that by, you do, but you do that by the tier itself, not by the declining.
Well, they're going to blow right through the tier if they're, if they're all considered one meter. So you'd have to do it by unit at that point. We have to, if you have unit information, like, we know this is four units, this is twelve units, then we could do it by that way.
So you want, I'm just going to stick with residential multi. Do you want them to be classified as residential customers or non-residential?
They're classified currently as non-residential customers, right? I don't see the necessity in changing that.
Okay, very good. That's what I wanted to hear.
In other words, if you're not changing the fractions of the applications of the cost by an exponential amount, to me, you're right sizing the charges for the classification of that property.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. I understood exactly what you were, what you wanted us to do. So non-residential.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think there's going to be some issues there.
I, I just want to make sure.
If you say it's a, I don't know, what, what's a typical apartment number of units?
Say four units.
So there's nothing really large, you know, large.
We have large.
Twenty, thirty plus. Yeah, so one of those, if you just consider them as one customer, they're going to blow right through those beneficial earlier tiers, and all that usage is going to be at the high tier, and they're going to be really penalized for that.
They're non-residential.
Yeah, right? Because they're considered commercial.
You mean that, you mean the, the commercial apartment building that a commercial owner?
I mean, that low-income people live in that need the benefit of these lower rates. You're going to, you're going to crush them. They're going to, their bill's going to go up unbelievably.
I think I would have to see.
Yeah, it's important to see sample bills, yeah. I'm just thinking through it. I'm kind of anticipating, because I've seen this other places, right? Sometimes what you'll do is you'll say, okay, every apartment uses less than a five-eight inch, so maybe they're eighty percent of a single family, or maybe they're sixty percent of a single family. And then we set it up that way to give them each the benefit, every apartment, I think, is the benefit of the tiers, not considering as one whole customer.
Right, I understand.
Yeah. It's another complexity we'd have to figure out, but yeah. It is more fair.
It offsets that impact.
Yeah.
Much like impact fees are different for different types of residential structure.
Yeah, because the apartment you use is a lot less. They're not irrigating, right? They don't, you can't even turn on the spigot to the building. They're not having that. I mean, maybe the.
Object to the user.
No, an apartment doesn't get access to, I mean, maybe there's a car wash in the apartment complex or something like that, but it's a pool or something. But they're, they don't individually get to go and, you know, water grass apartment building. I'm talking about these massive ones. I'm not talking maybe a four unit.
I'm thinking of, of, I guess, more like your, like your thing, like you've got, you know, developers now will build like, you know, entire sticks of of townhouses. They don't sell them.
I'm not done with townhouses.
I know, but what I'm saying is, is then they rent them as all like one.
They're all individually metered, the single residential units. Reese, the Reese Farm Development would, is, I guess, a good example that's, that's coming up. All of the townhomes will be individually metered, and the two apartment buildings will be master metered. The apartment buildings, um, under the current rate scenario would be in the declining tier. And all of the townhomes in the current rate scenario would be in the inclining tier.
Yeah, and I don't think that's right.
Okay, so.
But there's got to be a way to figure that out that that is fair within the system.
Yeah, I, I would class them more as residential. If it's, that's typically, you know, it's, it's families and it's couples that live in there, they're, they're not non-residential, even though it's a non-residential corporation that owns it.
We'll figure it out. I'm not sure what it's going to look like right now, but we'll figure it out. Our plan, the goal, our plan was to, one, have this discussion, present some alternatives, take the information back, and then come back. I would like to come back to January timeframe. My reason for January is that gives us plenty of time to move forward to, to continue to iron out the details and zero when exactly we want to be so that we can have rates in place for July first.
And listen, I have absolutely no interest in micromanaging that process. But I will also say I'm absolutely happy to sit through those discussions and participate in that conversation to reach that.
That's helpful.
So if, if.
You asked for it. I think it was the last words.
So, um, and maybe, and maybe pick one of those examples, right? You were just talking through. Here's what the bill looks like now. Here's what's going to look like.
Right.
Yeah.
Well.
I think we have some alternative we can cut out because I see that.
Yeah.
It was, I was kind of stepping through of where we're trying to get to eventually. But well, I don't need to show four, five alternatives every time. That's a, that's a lot.
And I'm going, going to add a little bit, I guess, to the complexity because when we work through residential multi, we do not go back and reassess allocation. We, residential multi, when they come on the system, they purchase the amount of allocation. They believe that they're going to need, based on the number of units they have. We, city code only, when, when we work through allocation, it, if you will, it takes them, that customer class out of the mix. So let's say we have an apartment building, it's eight units, and their allocation, I don't know, they have an allocation of fifteen hundred gallons a day, and they're using twenty five hundred gallons a day consistently and looking at a three hundred and sixty-five day average. They never are, like the code is written right now, we do not go back once a year and evaluate them and charge them for that additional capacity in the system. If we're going to look at residential multi maybe a little bit differently, or if we're going to look at them the same way we are, we may need to go back into and decide how we want to look at allocation. So because, to be completely honest, they get a break, they get a break on capacity as well. You do not, they are never required to purchase additional capacity in the system. All other non-residential customers are required to purchase additional capacity. So we'll probably need to have that discussion too as we work through these rates when we're talking about equity. Be back in June.
Next up, we have a review of amendments for speed camera fines. Good.
Whatever you want, done. That's what the mayor said.
Yeah.
So good evening, everyone. Essentially, we're asking for council and the mayor to look at amending sixty dash seventeen of city code. House Bill one eighty-two was passed and signed by the governor and passed, and essentially creates a tiered system to the automatic speed enforcement system that we use and that mayor and council instituted in two thousand and eleven. For those of you who don't know, Officer Call, most of you probably do. He's the expert on the speed camera stuff. So I'll let him explain essentially what the House Bill one eighty-two means.
So essentially what it does is the, the speed camera fines have not changed since they started speed cameras. It's always been a straight forty dollar fine. So what the House Bill introduced was having a tiered system. As you can see in your packets here, it's based on the amount of speed you're going over the speed limit. The higher up you go, the more fine you pay, which is kind of traditional. If you get pulled over by an officer, the fines assessed by how fast you're going. So that's kind of what they're going to, going to. Um, the fines are still civil penalties. There's no points. It's not, it goes against your insurance. So none of that aspect of it changes. The only thing that changes is the fines increase the faster you're going. All these cameras are established in school zones. We're looking at safety of kids in school zones, and these are effective programs. It slows people down.
And as a reminder, not only have the fees not increased, but the citation is not distributed until you are twelve miles an hour over. I'll repeat, you're twelve miles an hour over. It's not like, ooh. You're going two miles an hour over. We're not gonna give you forty more, we're gonna, it's not. So this is an inclining tier. And my, my only other thought process, so again, state legislation, tier system. Inclining tier system, as we were just talking about on the water, wastewater rate side. But we do a five dollar discount if you pay in seven days. With this inclining tier, I'm not sure that that's gonna be very effective, and quite frankly, I don't know that it's very effective now. Because most of the time, when I get the complaints, right? I get the, why can't I pay this at the City of Hagerstown? It's because we outsourced this. You can only pay this to our vendor. Many argue, it takes me longer than seven days to get my check there. They won't accept my five dollar discount. So could we, since we're already gonna have to make changes, could we look at taking away the five dollar discount if it's not really an incentive for people to pay it faster? Just a thought.
No, I'm not really a good speed cameras anyway, so. I feel like, you know, we've got too many of them in Montgomery County, put a whole bunch there too, so it's just a money-making scheme in my opinion, so.
Anybody else?
I, I don't have an opinion on the, the fee. Um, I do have a question. So when you read the code, it talks about, uh, you know, what, uh, where's the section? State, that's the, the. It's something about the state setting that where the state has set the speed limit or something, where the city sets the speed limit. Anyway, I guess my base question is, we don't have any speed cameras in places that are less than twenty-five miles per hour currently, correct?
We have them in thirty-nine hours in Pennsylvania Avenue and, um.
But left, I'm, I'm asking left. No, we can't go in, we can't, we can't go in and say, you know what? We're gonna change the speed to fifteen miles per hour so that we can catch you at twenty-seven. What's the lowest where we are able? The twenty-five is the lowest we're able to set that. Okay.
So you don't get the ticket unless you're going at least thirty-six.
Right, so you gotta be going thirty-seven miles an hour.
And a twenty-five.
Yeah, minimum, at the minimum place.
And that would be a forty dollar tip.
Yeah, okay.
And it would continue to be so unless you're going excessive.
Got any problem?
Everybody else?
No.
Just a reminder, this is a standby ordinance, so it'd have to come back within a bit.
They do have a proposed, and that's the sort of care. If you go ahead and get Jason again and put that in there about the five dollar discount.
It's item number six. We can leave it. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there from the person who said state end results and sees the financial reports at the backend.
Okay, we're leaving the discount.
And I should have, I had an opportunity and I should have provided that to Officer Culp before we started this.
Yeah, I, I don't have a, I don't have an opinion on whether or not, I've had people contact me about the discount. They said they didn't get their, we all know the U.S. Postal Service ain't what it used to be, so they don't get the tickets till sometimes fourteen, fifteen, two weeks later, whatever. If I see, if they tell me that, I can get in the system, actually provide them the discount of five dollars, so.
I'm putting you in speed.
Time to mail, I'll take care of it. We just like for them to get them paid.
Tell everybody to do it. Appreciate it. All right, next up is Chief Kiper. Andy Lewis on the lodging out of doors ordinance sixty day update.
Uh, good evening. So I wanted to, uh, provide just an update to, to the public. You guys have a document in front of you that kind of covers the last sixty days. So just to go over this very quickly, since we enacted the ordinance back on August the eighth, we've had forty-three total encounters with individuals sleeping, camping, or otherwise lodging in public spaces. Of these encounters, twenties, twenty of them were calls for service. We got, we got called there and twenty-three where we initiated contact ourselves. So about a fifty-fifty split, uh, as it was the first thirty days, we've had this as well. Uh, the encounter composition, uh, one of the things that, uh, I also remember, uh, Burnett wanted was to identify the individuals. So we've had, um, of individual contacts, we had thirty-five single people. Uh, there was two couples, a group of six friends. Contacts on public property were twenty-six, contacts on private property were seventeen of those. Uh, the engagement status of the forty-three encounters, thirty-seven individuals provided responses. So thirty of those individuals or eighty-one percent stated they had been offered services prior to our contact. Seven individuals or nineteen percent stated they had not been offered services. Um, and then thirty-two individuals, eighty-six percent reported they are not currently engaged in public service. So of all those, uh, forty-three encounters, thirty-two said they were not engaged. Eleven individuals or fourteen percent stated they are currently engaged in services. The housing and unemployment question that we asked, uh, homeless, they, there was, homeless with no place to go, there was thirty. Homeless had a place to go but couldn't go to due to conflict. That was five. And again, conflict might be that they, um, they use controlled agent or substance at home and the people that they, they won't let them do that, so they, they won't go home or something like that. That, that's what we're talking about when we call, talk about conflict. Five or six chose, chose to be outside and then two did not respond, uh, to the question. Forty-one of those were unemployed. Uh, the residency, the question that we asked, and that's, uh, where are you, where are you from? Where are you from? Do you live here? Have you been from here? Twenty-five of those individuals from Hagerstown, fifteen were from other jurisdictions. Those included Baltimore, Frederick, Martinsburg, New York, Rockville, Washington DC and Pennsylvania. Those, uh, fifteen, there was, that's where the areas they came from. Observe barriers, officers documented twenty-eight instances and of observed barriers during these encounters. The most common were, as we would understand, mental health challenges, uh, controlled danger, substance use, and refusal of available services. So that's, that's the big ones that we see. Uh, that's not a surprise. That's what we, we've come across quite often. Enforcement actions, we moved along and informed of the ordinance twenty-two individuals. We moved along and individuals that were already aware of the ordinance were fifteen. We made two arrests for warrants. We have warrants for them. We made three arrests for other criminal charges, whether it was trespass or, you know, uh, some other related, unrelated charge. Uh, what I do wanna point out here is that we had two arrests for the ordinance. Now, the arrest was made on shopping center property. So, uh, the officer, the same officer made the arrest on those two incidences. We didn't pick up on it until after the second one. We realized that he had charged with the out of doors ordinance. It did not apply because it's not owned by the City of Hagerstown. It was owned by the shopping centers. So those charges were dropped and, uh, we, we've corrected that action with staff. Uh, it was a newer officer and just, just misunderstood, um, the ordinance. So we did make an error on two charges where we, we mischarged and, and shouldn't have. In both of those cases, though, uh, the individuals refused to leave and would have exactly been what we, we were talking about being an incentive to be on public property. They were just absolutely refusing to leave and basically challenged us to make the arrest on them. He just happened to charge him with the wrong charge.
He also charged him with trespassing, so it'll be one of the ones where we just drop the out of doors ordinance and the trespassing still applies. It's private property. So it's still okay, but we, we just said.
It wasn't a false arrest. He made the wrong charge. So, so I wanted to at least bring that up, uh, that, that we did, did correct that, uh, with that officer and, uh, that's seventy-two instances that we, we noticed. Um, we continue to balance education, service connection, and accountability with our contacts. Uh, officers remain consistent in verifying awareness of available resources and documenting observed barriers to service engagement. While enforcement has been minimal, the majority of the interactions are a result of individuals being moved along voluntarily. Uh, often with renewed awareness of available assistance. So we've, as we've promised, when we will put this ordinance together, we're still gonna look for voluntary compliance and we're, we're getting that. It's, it's fifty-fifty when we come across whether they're on private or public, public property. But we always tend to get compliance and we do that with most everything we deal with, not even outside of this, just, you know, with speed or whatever else you're talking, you're talking about, don't we get voluntary compliance? So we're very satisfied with what we're seeing, uh, and what we're hearing from the community partners that are seeing more, um, traffic into their services for people wanting assistance. We're hoping that we have an, that unintended consequence that we weren't anticipating, uh, seems to be working.
It seems like there's a lot of folks from other jurisdictions that dumped here too, or have traveled here. They're not even, we're supporting a transient community that's not even native to here and as taxpayers, that's what we've been seeing for a long time here. And we did the homeless shelter tour and we've been told they've had busloads of people from West Virginia and other areas where they should just dump off here. And that's a major concern.
Correct.
Well, really quickly, I just wanted to thank you for being candid and, you know, expressing that there was a missed arrest and that you guys handled it correctly. Um, the question that I had pertained to the homeless individuals, that thirty count, were any of those individuals barred from any locations? It's not that they didn't have a place to go, but the places that they could go to, they were not able to go to. Like they were not allowed in those centers, or did they?
The ones that were offered services?
The ones, yeah, the homeless, no place to go. Right.
We didn't capture that, but I'll tell you just from experience, usually when you deal with someone, they've been barred or banned from this place, this place, and this place due to whatever conflicts they had. So that is honestly very common. That's a very good point. We, we see that all the time.
The other no is that they, you know, they maybe, there's no shelters that are open at the time. Uh, there's no place for them to go to because there's, uh, the shelters aren't even open during the cold weather season. Uh, if they are, um, females or, uh, females with small children, there may not be openings at Salvation Army, so it may be one of those kind of situations as well.
Someone don't qualify.
Some don't qualify just because of, uh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, Chief, is there any way with the next one that we can put the numbers kind of side by side so that we kind of see, um, month to month? Like if it's up or down, if it went up or down?
I can let you know, just, I brought the old stats with me, just, uh, kind of, just do a quick comparison. The first thirty days, we were out with sixteen, we had sixteen encounters. So that went up slightly in terms of our encounters, uh, since that, not much. Uh, fifty-fifty split on the, uh, property or public property. We had, uh, ten of those individuals were, yeah, thirty percent, um, had not been offered services prior to our contact, seventy percent had been offered contact. The engagements, we had eighty-one percent not engaging in, in services compared to nineteen percent during that time. And then the employment status is, um, eighty-four percent were unemployed. Living situation, chose to live outside, that was, uh, thirty-one percent or five individuals of those sixteen. Homeless with con, conflict were three. That would have been nineteen percent. No place to go would have been eight of those. That would have been about fifty percent of those people that we dealt with during the first thirty days. Residency, we had seventy-five percent, or twelve of those individuals were from Hagerstown, four were from someplace else. The, the observations of the issues, um, drugs, mental health, and, uh, we had none reported. We, we changed it. We got a different outcome this time, but, um, we had one with mental health illness, uh, five had, uh, observed to be under the influence of something. Um, and then others, we just didn't have anything to observe or didn't have any information on.
And in your opinion, are you guys seeing like, seeing people, like, um, majority, like same numbers of same people? You know what I mean? Like, are you seeing the same people, basically?
These numbers are different people. These are different, these are different people. These are not the same people. Now, I'm, I'm not gonna say that this thirty days didn't have a repeat of someone from the last thirty days, but during the thirty-day period, these are all in separate individuals. We are tracking the individuals by name so that, um, Sergeant Plummer's been tracking that to try to keep track of if we have any repeats. And he don't have a report he gave me, so I'm assuming there was no repeats of individuals.
But we are seeing a lot of people, new faces. I mean, that is something that's very common.
What happens to the, the five people you mentioned that you encounter that are under the influence of something?
It's an observer, it's an observation from us. They, they either have admitted that they were, they're out, that they have, they have an addiction issue or we can detect alcohol or, uh, there's some other, uh, visual that we can determine that they're, they're clearly under the influence of something.
But in that case, you don't arrest that individual?
No, 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 the law doesn't allow us to do that.
I know, I, I want you to say that clearly because I think that's the misnumber that people have is that you can just simply go out and do that, you know, all day long.
No, a lot, a lot of those things that, uh, we would have had some opportunity to do some things were people that were under the influence that they were caused some, some kind of disturbance has been taken away from us by the state legislator. So there's, there are things we just not allowed to do that we could do five, six years ago.
You don't arrest people for being homeless just if they don't leave public property.
Yes, exactly.
And to the point, that's why I brought up the third individuals. They're not being detained or arrested.
Nope, they're voluntarily moving along.
Right.
And we're offering them services and trying to get them connected. And, uh, and again, I'm not gonna say that the ones we've contacted are the ones going in, but the services that we talked to in the community are seeing an influx of people coming in wanting services. So we're, we're hoping that's having an impact on that.
And I think that's a concern where they're coming here to the community and, you know, like I said, a transient population, a lot of them live in hotels and dual, they walk up and down and, you know, they're not even from here.
Right.
And yet they're bringing their problems here and we have to deal with that. And I don't know, you know, if you know they're closing the Jessup Prison, but you know Governor Moore is, how's that gonna affect Washington County? I mean, are they gonna be dumping them all more here? You know, and that's a big problem.
I do know that the services that are here do not provide services like the shelters. Um, the, uh, the rescue mission do not service people that aren't from Hagerstown or Washington County. They will briefly for three days at the shelter, the cold weather shelter, that'll take someone for three days until they can help make them arrangements. But that's as much as they can stay there where, where other individuals from Washington County can stay there for the full term. So there are, there's a misnumber of the services are providing those services free for anybody that wants to come there. But if they determine you're not from here, they, they don't have the ability to do that. They don't have the ability to do that. They, uh, the funding is limited for those nonprofits, so they have their own set of rules. But they're compassionate enough that if you were dropped off here from Martinsburg, like they've, they've heard, uh, and had no fault of your own and you're dropped off at those, the doorsteps, they will try to help you for at least three days. And then you're, unfortunately, you're on your own at that point to get back to where you need to or, or seek other services elsewhere. But Hagerstown's not a point of, uh, drop off where you can just come here cuz we have better services than everybody else. They have, we have good services, but those services are primarily for Washington County residents. And the services do hold that accountable. And we went, so we went and did the tour, learned that, um, there's, there are the rules that are in place. Let's try to come back. We're just not very good at getting that message out to our fellow jurisdictions around us or their agencies are bringing people here. So that's, that's what we're trying to work on with legislators, see if they're, we can work on some legislative, uh, uh, things to keep that from happening. We'll see what happens.
I just wanna thank you guys for continuing to modify the, the survey or the criteria based on this discussion. I think that's really helpful as we learn more about this process, so I just wanna thank you guys.
Sure.
Uh, next up is the discussion reopening of Bethel Street Substation. Um, Chief Kiper and Kathy Santiago could. As well. You wanna lead it, Kathy?
Um, the substation was built in probably two thousand with a grant that we got from HUD. It had, um, the security cameras in there, or the security system and the cameras and all that stuff started there. We had to build it inside Bethel Gardens because we didn't have any other property that it would, we would have access to, that we wouldn't have to buy. But the substation's for the whole community. Um, when they utilized it, we didn't see as much in the area as we do now. Um, the police presence makes a big difference. It really does. And, and just not for Bethel. It's for the whole community on a whole. But because we are off the street and people can hide on our property, under the steps, behind ACs, whatever they can do, we gated off as much as we possibly can with what little money we have, but we don't have money like housing does. That's just, we have ninety-four units. We don't have that kind of an income. So we put the lights up. We've done everything that we possibly can. I think it would be good for the community to start utilizing that. I know they can't be in there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week cuz it, it's not feasible. But I do believe the presence would make a difference in that neighborhood. I do believe that. And the whole neighborhood, not just Bethel Gardens.
What would it take to reopen the substation?
Staff.
The staff. I mean, everything's ready to go there?
Yeah, I mean, it's office space now. The, the, the camera system doesn't run out there anymore. I mean, we've obviously, you've seen our new system and where it operates from, and it can be operated from your, from your. Where it operates from, and it can be operated from your, from your car, so I mean, we don't need to have the system in there. Uh, it was always a place for the, the the unit that worked out of that, that area to use it for a report writing back in the day, when we did a little more handwriting reports. We did some things that was not as much digital, um, they would use it for that kind of stuff. It's not that we don't wanna use it, it's just that. We don't have, I don't have the staff and the culture service are so much that that they, they can't be there. I know we've been really ramping up our, our activity down in the John Street community, um. Andy, you brought some stats with you, didn't you, so um, just to. To try to combat the issues that are going on, just in that community, and that, that's just. A snapshot of what we see in other communities, so it's not that John Street's the community we need to address. We've got issues at Locust and Antietam, that neighborhood, we got other issues at other areas that are equally the same. As in terms of the activities that's going on and what we're seeing, so um, we're spread, we're spread thin. Even with the staff that I've got and increases that I've gotten, we're still spread thin, I've got ten men field training right now. Uh, so they're on the street getting trained, but they're not on their own yet. Um, we've got uh, some injuries right now, I've got a couple of people out on injuries, and we're waiting on them to get back, we're still waiting Langley to get back from being shot. Um, those are, there's, there's things that creep in and start to just eat away at that increase in our staffing, they're on the books, but they're not able to work. So we're in that kind of limbo stage right now, I got nine in the academy right now, hoping that we can graduate all nine of them. Um, everyone's doing well there, but we won't see them for another ten months, um, on the street by themselves, so. It it's the same old song, I can come in and tell you, talk to you guys about it, it gets, it's uh, frustrating. Um, on our part, we, we see it, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, it just doesn't seem to get here fast enough. And then we have issues that are going on in communities like Bethel Gardens that um, is frustrating for us to try to address, but we. We are trying, um, and we're trying some new things. Um, we're, we're doing some, some task forces that I'm pulling some, some people out of. Patrol for thirty day task forces to address specific issues. Um, we're just finishing up our in-service training that required almost to to go to training for uh, two full weeks. So I had to put that on hold until everybody got done, because I've got people out of training that should be on the street, so. All those things that's behind the scenes and no one understands, that that eats away at your staff. Um, but Andy, if you wanna, do you have the numbers, uh, just to, just to give you a snapshot of the things that we've been doing in that area? Um, and that's not the only thing that we've been doing, but just where we, where we're at there, so.
Yeah, so a quick snapshot of of what we've been doing is total over the past six months, we filed uh. Two hundred and thirty one charges, so, and this, this is, this is gonna include like uh, Prospect to. Uh, Bethune, like those, just mainly in the, in that small area, but. Twenty seven assault charges, five auto thefts, fourteen burglary charges, sixty CDS charges. Five MDO destruction of property charges, twenty four large sin, or theft charges. Other offenses would be stuff like urinating in public, trespassing, very minor stuff, we've actually filed seventy eight charges on that. Uh, and five robberies, total, we've had three thousand seven hundred and twenty five calls uh, in six months in the area. So it it has been, you you know, it's taken up a. Good bit of manpower, and we, we have put a lot of into it, I know the chief, me and Lycen, we're in at three AM, like three weeks ago, running the detail, um, so. Uh, we have, we have been doing things, and sometimes we're not seen and and you hear about what we're doing, so.
I can say that since I've been back in July, I have seen a marked improvement down there. I can say that, um, they have been real prevalent down there, the police have, as much as they can. Um, I just would like to see some utilization of that building, because it's sitting there. And that's what I would like to see.
Three thousand calls for services, quite a lot.
Yeah. They, I mean, it's, it's not bad, it's not. Yeah.
Which means like, even if you're not at the substation, sixteen times a day.
Right.
You're in the neighborhood.
We're running about three hundred calls a day.
So if the building isn't functional.
The building is.
If the building isn't used for some functional purpose, is the building creating a detractant or an attractant for? Uh, negative activity?
They linger on the outside of the building, yes, they do.
I guess that's what I'm asking, is if, if, if there's no intent to reuse the building and reopen the building. Then let's just say that, and if the building's an attractant for potential negative activity, then let's, then let's fix the space. And I, I'm not saying, like, to me, I don't know this, I don't know whether the interest is to reopen it or not reopen it. But if there isn't an interest to reopen it in the foreseeable future, and it is not providing a positive benefit to the neighborhood and the community. Then I think we need to start talking about other alternatives that that do improve. Um, you know, the aesthetics and use of the space. That's just my two cents, I'm not real familiar with the area of, of, you know, in terms of the activities that you're referring to that occur. But I generally have an idea of where, you know. It's situated as it applies to individuals that may wanna do the things that you're saying, you know, try and find a place to get out of the way. Uh, and if it is adding to that.
It doesn't add to that, because the way that it's set, the only thing that they can do is sit on the sidewalk. Or whatever it, what is it?
The lid.
Yeah, that, um, they can sit there.
Okay.
They can hang there, but they can't get behind it because it's gated, we gated it all, so there's no way to go hide behind it. They hide behind our ACs and under our porches and stuff like that, that's where they hide.
But what I'm hearing is you're saying you don't have flexibility in staffing to have someone stay.
No, cuz, cuz I'm, you know, so, we, we averaged roughly three hundred calls for service every single day. In a twenty four hour period, so when you've got six to eight officers working at any given time, they're busy. They're running from this call to the next call, to the next call, to the next call, and, and that's. Unfortunately, where we are, so when we utilized it, we had a dedicated unit that worked nothing but Jonathan Street. And that was when Open Air Drug Market was much bigger than it is today, uh, it was. Generally, the place that everyone went to buy drugs was to go to Jonathan Street back in that, in that time. That's not, that's not existent anymore, I mean, now you pick your phone up and you call, you meet your drug dealer wherever you wanna meet him at now, so. That's not the issue that we're seeing the same way, so um. The fact that we can't concentrate on that area because that concentration of actual crime is spread over the whole city, makes it difficult for that. Um, to, to, to provide that kind of focus, to have a unit, whole unit down there. So our, our crime suppression unit is um. Spread across the whole, the whole city, and we, we give them focus based on intelligence coming in real time, so we know we got issues going on. Um, um, there's gonna be a underage party on a Friday night that, that uh, has had history in the past. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna sign up for that, and that might be in a completely different part of town. Um, we may have uh. Some drug dealing that we know is going on with individuals, they'll focus on those individuals, those individuals may take them wherever they're gonna take them throughout the city. In terms of what, what, working that, um, so. What, you know, when we had our, our community resource officers, we had someone assigned down there. And, and they used that, it was an individual officer, one officer, that would only work eight hours a day, it was just, you know, they didn't work twenty four hours a day. But we did have that, um, I'd love to get back to that, you know, that, that program works, and it worked. Uh, but unfortunately, I had to, to disband that when we lost twenty five percent of our manpower, you know, several years ago, so we're trying to get back to that.
Uh, I also wanna bring up that point, because I remember, Karen, it was last year or first or so. About the community resource officers, bringing that back, and I remember being excited about it, and I remember stating when. I grew up in Bethel Gardens, how we had those officers that we knew. That helped build that relationship, that would tell Tiara, get off the corner, go home, I know where your mom lives, and they were. Positioned at the substation enough to know that even if they wasn't there all day, we still felt safe, and. I thought that was coming back, so I'm, I'm.
I wanted to bring it back still, just gotta get the manpower to do it, so we're still waiting.
So even, so. How many, I don't even know the number, like how, how many officers would be sufficient enough to have one? Payroll to allow for one CRO in that area? Like, what would be like the, I know you hate magic numbers, but.
Yeah.
What would be like the magic number?
Well.
At least have one. Person.
Right.
Few hours a day.
Yeah.
Not even like a bullshit.
Yeah, wouldn't even have to be eight hours a day, it's just.
Making a present, just, just one officer, and it'd be the same person. Again, to establish our relationship, so it's not different officers here and there, and then you can't really build that trust when it's different officers.
Right. So. The union contract has us bound by uh, numbers that we have to supply to the patrol division. So I have to put so many people on patrol every day, so it has to be a minimum working every day of six. That's the minimum that's required to be on the street, to start the shift and end the shift, so we have to have six. So in order to do that with a twenty four seven uh, rotation, uh, under the current schedule we have, which is an eight hour day schedule. Uh, we need forty two officers somewhere running there, and we've been paying overtime almost every day to get to minimum staffing, just on pretty much all month. I want at least a shift, if not two shifts a, a day. Um, because of injuries, because of some other issues that are going on, and we're waiting on these few, these people in field training, get out of field training. So that's part of that, is that I gotta meet that minimum standard first, from a safety standpoint, you know, six isn't even enough. Yeah, it's not my goal, it's not the goal of the union, that's the minimum we, we've agreed on, it's being the safest number that we can go out on the street with every single day. Uh, to cover culture service and be safe for each other, so in order to get to a more comfortable number. We're not paying overtime to just meet minimum standards, when people need to be offered a training, that number's gonna be around forty six. And we are, if, if I didn't have people on injury. And the other issues, and we didn't, we just lost one, uh, that left to go to the Secret Service. Um, I got some retirements coming up, starting in December. That number with the ten that was graduating this last academy, I'd have had one extra. Back down to even now, because I've lost one to Secret Service, so I'm back down to being even, to get to that number just for the, get the patrol division where they need to be. That's not counting the, the. Retirement's gonna happen in December or January, it's not happening, I got another one's gonna, I know it's happening in July. And, and if we can graduate everybody from the academy, if we can graduate everybody from field training, we're already two down below that number for just patrol. Uh, to get to an, to get to a number that's comfortable, or a guaranteed paying overtime. So the attraction of trying to get laterals, people for that are already certified in the state of Maryland, or comparative compliance, or where they're. They, they are um, recognized by the state, but come from another state as a police officer, we're, we're seeking that, that's our new. Goal with the new recruiting that we've got, that we, we got our grant money to go after, so we're trying to create a faster method of getting people here.
So one of your goals is to bring that resource.
Absolutely. There, and I got two other areas, I'd love to have, I'd love to have three of them, because it worked.
I wasn't even thinking, like, like you said, not, it's just the presence, not to have them there a whole eight hours, but even to go there. To kinda check in.
The eight hours works, that's where we, we found, we did, we had it as a full-time program, it worked, um, they got to know. As many people in that, in their communities as they could, to the point where the kids had a better, a better reaction with them. Over every other police officer. They would. Community would report things, if a major crime happened, to that officer, but wouldn't wanna talk to anybody else. Yeah, and we understood that, when we, when I wrote the grant and, and wrote the, the program several years ago, when we put it together, uh. The guys that, that we put in those, those units made that magic happen, but it, it worked exactly the way I drafted it up, that I thought it would work. And it's just back to the old school beat cup, the, the.
And I think um, Kathy might agree, like, a lot of them just want someone. That they have a problem with, like you said, they can report to them and not have to call, there's a lot of people in that community don't even like to come out their house. Cause there's no, like, they don't, they don't feel.
And that's how that program worked, the officers gave out cards, they had their phone number on it, their cell phone, and they were able to, to have a direct contact with them. To do that, that program has been my, one of my main goals to bring back as soon as we got our staffing back up, because it works. Uh, it's not about the grants, it's about getting people hired.
A silly question, Chief, but um, does a CRO officer and officer have the same qualifications and requirements? It's exactly the same. Yeah, Andy, thank you for, for giving the numbers, because I think that's helpful for everyone to hear, because like you mentioned. That the gardens or Jonathan Street area is not the only area where we get complaints about, and most times, we'll get the emails and calls and said. We just need police here, I mean, Hager's Crossing, that's, they've mentioned that several times on the HOA Facebook page, and I'm like reading, I'm like. Uh, but that's, that's helpful to know that.
It is everywhere.
It, it's, it's permeated itself, the, the issues that we're talking about has, has gone from little pockets of areas of town. From twenty five years ago to everywhere, and. It doesn't matter, I mean, I, you can make that, that call to your drug dealer and meet him in the Walmart parking lot, they, they make these deals in the open spaces. It's not hiding in the dark anymore, because they can do that with the technology we have, it's made things harder for us. In terms of being able to concentrate on those things, but. Um, we've learned how to adapt to it and, and combat that, and clearly with the numbers that Lieutenant Lewis has provided, you know, we're, we're doing what we can. Our camera systems have been a big part of that. Um, that detail that he talked about, where the captain and himself and myself came in, where was twenty officers in that, that morning? From NTF, from the sheriff's department, from MSP, from um. MSP, they had their, their gang guys up here that morning too, from MSP. We spent hours starting at three o'clock in the morning and made ten arrests that morning. At Murph and Jonathan, basically is where everything happened at.
You went into one of the units.
And then we did search warrant, two search warrants down there, they had search warrants ready to go after that, so we did two, two search warrants at. Uh, on top of that, so they had a drug dealer that they were looking at, that they knew. Went to a convenience store, and then would get down there every morning and set up shop, and so they, they got that intelligence, worked on it, and then we went down to the detail. And sure enough, he showed up and the first person they locked up was him, and then during that whole time, we were washing cameras and watching everybody else do what they were doing. And so when they rolled in, they already had people ready to lock up, so those are the things that we're trying to do.
It was effective too, for a long time, it was effective, it was quiet.
And I think that's why it's really important that we brought back up Operation Take Back. Cause that initiative is literally the neighborhood getting involved and saying, we don't want this activity here, and identifying. Spots in, in the, in the neighborhood, like behind the AC units, or adding more light, um, that's why that initiative. Is, has to be like one of our priorities. I'm glad we're bringing it back.
And the neighborhood um, first meeting is really growing there, and a lot of people didn't even know it, it's not just for Bethel Gardens. It extends to Potomac and up to Prospect, a lot of them didn't really, I just, you know, have that whole concept that it's. For that whole demographic, so that's really growing, I love when the officers even come to engage with the residents that are there too. It makes a really big difference.
Yeah, Bethel Gardens is challenging by just the layout. Ways all laid, there's a lot of nooks and crannies and places. Yeah, we got with you guys several years ago, and got a, the gating, did a gating study for them, and they were able to get a grant and. Put a lot of the gating up, because they had a lot of activity going on behind a lot of buildings that stopped all that from just the, the environmental changes that we could make.
Yeah.
Um.
We did improve our lights, we redid all the lights down there just recently, so the lighting is better.
We've, we've had discussions about trying to see the possibility, trying to make it a gated community, just to, to help out, but.
Is that still an option?
Uh, it's difficult with public works and the fire department and all that, that's where. That's where it comes into play, is, is getting fire and rescue and stuff in there, so it's. Uh, but we were looking at, we had discussions and we're trying to come up with the out of the box thing.
It would still be a great idea if we could do it.
So those are, those are the challenges that, that that specific um, uh, community is facing, that's. A lot of it's environmental, it's just, just the building layout, it's the way it is.
Yeah.
Uh, but we're, we're working hard down there, trying to do what we can, and I'm not saying we won't ever use the substation, I just don't have the staff to put someone in there. Uh, for that, that visible appearance right now. Um, we've tried the CRO program, just ad hocing it on the shifts, but they're so busy that they just, they can't get with the time and the energy. And I don't wanna make a promise, I can't keep with that right now, to say two hours a day, we're gonna try to do, do X, Y, or Z. Uh, it really requires a, a person that's dedicated that wants to, to sign onto that, that area, or sign on to an area, not just that area. And that's what happened with the last time, I had three, we had the, we, we picked the sites, and the officers volunteered, we put it out, they volunteered, wanted to take it. Each took one, and they made that there. We put it out. They volunteered, wanted to take it. They each took one and they made that their, their project. And that's why it worked. So just assigning someone there doesn't always work because their energy's just not the same. So, and I know it's not what you want to hear, but that's, I don't, I want to be honest with you and tell you, you know, that's just the reality.
No, that makes sense. I mean, that's why we were having these kind of targeted expressions for awareness and seeing what we can do and what we can't do. Um, but I will be supportive of CRO coming back like I was last year. Ten years old. Um, but, uh, and then thank you, Kathy, for, um, I remember two years ago, you and Miss Pickles came.
Oh, yeah. Well, they'll be here next week.
Be here next.
Oh, wow.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Since we've been at it since three, I am going to move the other discussion until the following week to the last one. So we'll go straight into Jill Thompson, uh, with funding support for Washington Historical Society. And Andy Stout.
Good evening. And Andy Stout, um, executive director of the Washington County Historical Society is joining me tonight. And, um, excuse me, back in August, um, Andy was in front of the mayor and city council. And there was a discussion about, um, his concept plan to renovate a rear alley facing building for some of the historical society's space needs. And that led to the exploration of the, um, potential site alternative of the discovery station building at one oh one West Washington Street. So since then, we've had a number of, um, brainstorming and exploratory conversations. We had, um, a partners group that met and the mayor attended that to explore possibilities. So where we're at today is, um, the idea of doing a feasibility study specific to that property. And Andy has identified twenty thousand dollars to contribute toward that project. Um, the project could cost, um, fifty thousand. It could go slightly higher than fifty thousand. So my memo requests, um, city support of thirty thousand. But we'd like to amend that as a request of up to forty thousand for any contingency that may come along. Um, I've identified, um, a potential line item in, um, the economic redevelopment uh, budget that could be used to, um, pay for up to forty thousand. Um, during the budget season, I had, um, um, put additional funding into the Partners for Economic Progress Program with the vision of trying to reconfigure that program, which has, has, um, existed for over fifteen years, I believe. So it's time to start to relook at that. I feel based on the amount of budgeting that is in that line item, that we could support this as well as still come back to you with a reapproach on the, on the Partners in Economic Progress Program. Um, so what a feasibility study would do, and, um, I'll let Andy weigh in here, um, more is look at the, um, renovation needs and evaluate, um, the opportunities for collaboration with cultural and arts organizations. And it would not just look at the ability to purchase the property, but would look at having a sustainable project that would look at, um, the operations of, of a facility. Do you want to add further on the scope of the feasibility study?
Yes, I have directed and I do have two proposals already. I got them both today. Um, so I haven't had a chance to review them, but I have stressed to the, um, the companies, uh, to look at the, uh, economic feasibility of long-term, uh, management of this facility, because that's what we're interested in. The acquisition may actually be the easier component of the two, the long-term management and running of the facility. So, um, I left here, you know, it's kind of a really amazing story and total rock star here. And just everybody's been incredible, Mr. Mayor, staff, uh, everyone. And so I came here and I kind of laughed at, uh, the idea of trying to acquire the discovery station. And then within a day or two of my appearance here, the building went up for sale for the first time in twenty years. And the tenants vacated the building for the first time in twenty years, uh, just a few days after that. So this amazing series of events, uh, we have a very amicable and willing property owner who would like to see something great happen there. Uh, based on the wonderful, uh, meeting that we had here at City Hall, uh, the Washington County Arts Council would like to sublease part of the space from us. And it would allow them to expand greatly. Uh, they would have artist workspace, uh, retail space and gallery space. Possibly in the lower part of the building. Uh, it has its own, uh, exit and everything already. Um, and then the rest of the building would be something along the lines of the Heritage Hub, uh, Museum and Archives of Hagerstown in Washington County, Maryland. And, um, we've already got folks interested in, uh, subleasing some of the museum storage space in the building because we'll have excess space. So it could be a really great thing, a win-win for everybody that, something we can all be proud of.
I know that Councilman Ashar pitched the idea. And we as a city have put this, um, funding view of, of space in a coalition agenda item. Or what do you call that? Coalition item? So the city is, is putting forth the effort. But since this will be a for everyone, um, facility, have you asked the county to at least pitch in for the feasibility study, even though the city is pushing this forward? But I would like to see the county willing to, to add to the study.
Um, this aspect of it has been moving kind of quickly. So we did not reach out to the county. We can after this and reduce the city's portion by any amount that the county contributes.
Absolutely.
I think that, um, you might be on a slightly tight timeframe.
Tomorrow morning, I have to appear in Cumberland to request that the twenty thousand dollar grant money that we've already received from the Maryland Heritage Area Authority is transferred over to this project. And that will be the Historical Society's twenty thousand dollar share. So because I wanted to go there with some local buy-in, uh, that's how things moved quickly. The city, uh, offered its half. Certainly we can go back and try to get the county to cover half of the city's half or whatever it is. But, uh, I did want to be able to go to the Maryland Heritage Area Authority showing some local buy-in, uh, on this, other than just the Historical Society. Got where we are.
I think that would be a good start if we would go in on half and.
Right. There's gonna be a lot more chances for, right? Uh, the, the county can step in maybe for the next bill, whatever. It's gonna be a lot.
I, I like the link of this space between, um, its location and the ideas that are being, uh, put forward by the Museum of Fine Arts. You know, and, and so we've been trying to continue to find ways to link that, that cultural trail sort of area with the park. I don't think that these things, uh, are, are happening in, in some secular, and you know, amongst themselves. I think that, you know, the ideas they have for the traditional artists, uh, type space in the buildings behind the park are, you know, critical to linking to, you know, the ideas that you have for this building and tying in the arts.
True, absolutely.
Portion, uh, and then being obviously situated near, you know, other, uh, activities downtown, uh, like this or another. I just think that they do tie together well in a way that, that gives us the opportunity to start seeing the city in a more walkable manner among the, the positive, you know, attributes. Um, especially of our younger population and that, that can utilize types of spaces.
And you've already got all this, um, heritage, um, tourism money coming into the county. So it'd be nice to try to get more locations where people can spend that down in the areas.
And Sarah Hall did join our brainstorming meeting. So we were happy to see her be a part of it.
And the last thing we'll see, uh, having MHA A as our partner at the beginning is a really good thing because they'll be there. Uh, they like to see things through to the finish. So it's a good partner to have in the state. Very good.
So if there's support on this, then I'll have a motion, um, identifying the funding source in next week's regular session. And then Andy has, um, kind of consensus today to share, but official vote next, next week.
Council go over that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Your glasses are really cool.
No, thank you. I'll probably be reaching out to you individually just to make sure if there's anybody with anything that you want to see in this new place or people.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll try to keep short because we've been here so long, but.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick things for me. I'm in some trouble. This is a busy weekend and I'm talking louder because several of us lost mics. So I got a little problem to help. Um, but Thursday, Friday, Saturday, all leading up to Halloween and fall and all kinds of neat things. So on Thursday, drive through trick or treat at Fairgrounds Park from four to seven P M. On Friday is the downtown Halloween block party held on South Atomic Street from five thirty to seven thirty. And simultaneously there's Heger House Ghost Tour in that same Friday evening. On Saturday, took the day off with the Halloween doll costume parade at Fairgrounds Park starting at eleven A M. Followed by downtown business trick or treat. And that is from four to six, immediately stopping at the point that the ninety-eight annual Offsted Shummers Parade kicks off. Um, and I do just want to say, we started the meeting. This was all very good news. This was all very positive. Really do need to leave a heartfelt, all our thoughts with all of the nice.
Councilman Ashar.
Yeah. Uh, the only thing I'll say is, is obviously we are all thinking about Scott and his family. Uh, you know, we come to these meetings, uh, each week and folks see us here and they may see us out and about, but, but we're clearly closer uh, than what folks simply see us sitting here deliberating on matters on a weekly basis for. And so I just want to thank, uh, the mayor for, for your comments at the beginning of the meeting. I think they were a point for how we probably all feel.
Councilman Flaherty?
Yeah, I would just encourage everybody to keep Scott and his family and your thoughts and prayers. And we've got a lot of cool stuff coming up in the Halloween party downtown. And my dog's gonna be in the Halloween costume contest Saturday. So I'm looking forward to attending that.
Councilwoman Bell.
Uh, yes, once again, um, sending love and support to, to all the nice winners as well. Um, want to also thank Donna for being on the Zoom call with us the other day. Uh, we are hopefully getting the grant. I can't remember her name. Well, we're hopefully getting a grant from the state to do a civics academy. So we're gonna kind of host it like, um, kind of like a civic scroll. So we'll kind of do it at all parts of the town. Um.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Nothing for me tonight.
Councilwoman Burnett.
So, um, uh, I mentioned, uh, idea of having a town hall during my council comments last regular session. So I want to take this opportunity to ask the body formally, um, to host a town hall um, on rent stabilization. Um, the purpose would be to hear directly from residents, landlords and community stakeholders on housing stability issues, including rent increases, creases, evictions, renovations, security deposits, um, all to help guide this body to evaluate the pros and cons of rent stabilization. Um, the town hall would be here at City Hall. I provided, um, a format to the body via email of what that structure would look like. I'm just asking for, um, a head nod tonight. And, um. Also want to send my condolences to the Nice Warner family, um, Tressa and Scott. I consider them like stepparents. Um, they are such a supportive couple. Um, and Tressa's smile alone and her hug is something that you just can't, um, shake off that you won't get a chance to see that. But like Kristen said, you know, we do have connections outside of Tuesdays. And when there's a loss in the community, I feel it. I don't like to show it because I would see a cry. But, um, is this a reminder that life is short? And just remember to love on your family, your loved ones and tell them that you loved them, loved them. That's it.
Thing here, um, I communicated with Scott, um, this morning and talked to him this afternoon. And, uh, Tressa, Tressa was an absolutely wonderful lady. And I told him that she loved him with every fiber she had. And I could tell the interactions, um, between them and how I remember last, um, last year before I even became mayor, I sat in on the town hall with, uh, addressing the letters. And I watched Tressa defend him at, 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 at all costs. And that is truly inspiring, truly amazing. Um, so again, I, my thoughts and prayers could go out to the Nice Warner family as well. Um, shell stole my thunder. I was going to announce all that other stuff too. But I am really looking forward to the dog costume contest. I'm, I'm judging it and I go to this thing every year. I have a little dog who is kind of honorary, so I don't put him in it. Um, but I'm really looking forward to this. So, um, can I get a, a motion to adjourn? Second, any discussion on any items? Okay, we're adjourned.